It happens, yes. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. This meeting is now in session. I would like to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge. And Mr. Lander, would you like to lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands for a nation under God, limitedism, liberty, and justice for all. Please seat.
Before we begin this evening's school board meeting, let's please pause for a moment. All of us have been extremely concerned and saddened by the violence that took place last weekend in Charlottesville. This has been a tragedy for our community, our state, and our nation. I'd like to ask everyone to please take a moment of silence to remember the lives of Heather Hayer, Virginia State Patrol pilot, Lieutenant H.J. Cullen, and Virginia State Trooper Burke M. Bates, as well as the many others who were physically or emotionally injured by the violence of last weekend. Thank you. As members of the board and the community, all of us know students who will be attending the University of Virginia this fall. We know that this week's events have touched and deeply concerned them, their families, and our full community. Charlottesville is our neighbor. It is a great and peaceful place, and we are with them at this very difficult time. We, the Arlington School Board, join our governor and state leaders, many national leaders, and our local leaders, friends, and neighbors in rejecting the hate, racism, bigotry, and violence that was forced on Charlottesville this past weekend. As a school system, we stand for and are committed to inclusion and the celebration of our diversity. We understand the urgency. We must redouble our efforts to ensure that every child is supported and knows that he or she can and will excel in our schools. We also know that we need to ask ourselves some important questions. This year, our newest elementary school, Alice West Fleet Elementary, was named in honor of an Arlington teacher, an African-American woman who faced and defeated many obstacles. The recently opened Discovery Elementary honors the astronaut John Glenn, who lived in the neighborhood. And Campbell Elementary honors an Arlington couple, Edmund and Elizabeth, who fought for the desegregation of Arlington schools. These school names, the newest in our system, are different from past school names in terms of the kinds of people and work we choose to honor. Going forward, we will soon be naming the new school buildings at the Wilson site and Stratford site. We have high school projects at the Education Center and Career Center that will all need names. Given all this, it is simply clear to us as a board that now is the time. It's time to talk about the names of our schools and what they mean and why they matter. It is time to talk about the values these names reflect and the messages we are sending our children. Having said that, let me make a few things clear. First and foremost, no decisions have been made or will be made on any school name quickly without extensive community input and discussion. We are the governing body of a 27,000-student school system, and we will address this issue as we do all issues, using a careful, deliberative process that is fully transparent and involves extensive community engagement, research, and collaboration. We will not focus on any one particular school and ask, "Should we change the name of this school?" Instead, we will seek to establish naming criteria that reflect our values. This allows us to talk about all of our school names, current and future, and clarify where the lines are drawn between what we, as a community, consider acceptable and unacceptable. Establishing criteria prevents us from falling into the slippery slope problem. It will keep us focused on facts, not opinions. Please note that as we commit to a naming process this evening, we are also steaming ahead toward the first day of school, when approximately 27,000 students will walk through our school doors to start their year of learning. We, the school board, superintendent, executive leadership team, principals, teachers, and staff, have worked hard all summer to prepare for a very full agenda of policy revisions, community processes, budgeting, capital planning, strategic planning, and, most importantly, teaching our students every day. We are committed to this community conversation, but it will take time and resources to get it right. As the governing body of our school system, we have to be careful and deliberate. We have to ask the right questions to ensure a productive process. We have to bring a wide range of voices to the table. We have to do research, and we have to follow a transparent process to ensure everyone in this community understands how and why decisions have been made. This process will take time, but the important point today is that we are getting started. As always, we look forward to hearing from you and working with you. Please continue to write and call with your ideas and thoughts. We thank you for giving us the privilege of serving this great community, and we look forward to our discussions together. Thank you. We are now at the announcement section of our agenda. On Thursday, August 31st, we will be holding a planning work session at 6:00 PM next door in Room 101. Board members, do you have any other announcements? No? Dr. Murphy, would you like to make some announcements?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cannon. I'm actually going to start off with some of your comments that you made about us preparing for the start of school, along with one of our schools already starting. That was on Tuesday, August 1st, at Barcroft, and they have the modified calendar. There may be some familiar faces there you see in those pictures. Center is Judy Apostolika-Buck, the principal, and Heidi Smith, the assistant principal there. And as you can see, Ms. Tolento and Mr. Goldstein and Mr. Lander were also out on that day, as well as a number of the executive leadership team and folks from across the district. So a lot of excitement as the Barcroft students returned with their families on that day. And we'll be seeing that happening here across the school division on September the 5th. We want to remind everyone also about the upcoming Arlington County Fair. We are going to be in the same area at the fair there, at Jefferson Community Center with Arlington County. So look for us. We've got a number of exhibits and information that will be passing along to families, so please drop by, visit with us, and also participate in some of the activities that we have going on. There's also a number of things I know that are happening outside that children are excited about, so we'll be there on, starting Friday afternoon through Sunday afternoon. Dr. Natrius has got a presentation a little bit later this evening, so I'll just highlight this. I'm proud to say that all of our schools are fully accredited. She's going to review a little bit more in detail some of the standard of learning academic results, but we continue to see gains across many of our groups, and we're appreciative to our teachers and administrators, and also proud of our students for the accomplishments they've made. But more to come on that a little bit later this evening in a bit more detail. I do want to reach out to all of our sixth-grade families and just remind them about the T-DAP booster. And I'm also asked many times, "Well, what does T-DAP stand for?" And it's a Tetanus Diptheria Protusus Booster, and it's part of an immunization and also a state requirement. At this point in the year, we monitor this very closely because we want to make sure that all students are immunized when they return and so they can start out the first day. We've got about 78% of our sixth graders already immunized, and we're working very closely with our principals to ensure that the message gets out. I know families are on vacation, or they're looking also to take care of this right before school starts, but I just want to make folks aware that Arlington County offers the free immunization shots, and there you can see the various times that they're available. Also, all of the middle schools are hosting an open house event, and those, by the way, are at various times on August 31st. And immunization booster shots also will be provided there. So if you need more information about this, please reach out to your particular school, but we just want to encourage families that they know about that, and so we can have 100% of our students start on the first day. Dr. Cannon mentioned we've got a number of things that we're prepping. As you may have seen, we've already hired 282 new teachers to date. As of earlier this week, I believe we had five vacancies, and we're working diligently so that all of our classrooms have teachers in front of students on the first day. We had over 134 projects online. We've completed 109 of those. We also are working very closely to get our transportation letters out to families by August the 25th, and then also for families that may have special accommodations with transportation, look for your letters to be mailed out on August the 28th. And then finally, we are monitoring enrollment very, very closely. At this point in time, we have about 580 more students than we did last year. I do want to make note that this is a fluctuating number, and we'll continue to monitor that through September 30th, for the official September 30th count. And while we do have students enrolling, there may be many students who yet have elected to move to outside of the school division, and they may still be reflected in our enrollment count. So this number kind of ebbs and flows, so I just caution all of us, we do monitor this very closely to make sure that we staff our buildings appropriately. Just some highlights or some dates to look for. We had the administrative conference just now, over a week ago. It was hosted at Yorktown High School. Thank you to our new principal there, Ms. Bridget Loft, who is here this evening with us, but we're there in the atrium, and those are all of our administrators and central office folks from across the school division who participated in that professional learning for that day. On Monday, new teachers report. We also kick off with the three-day Festival of the Minds. All of our teachers report on the 24th. We've got in services through September the 1st, and then, as I made mention, we've got the first day of school on September the 5th, and we're anxiously awaiting students to return. I wanted to follow up with folks on one item. I know at the end of last school year, we partnered with the Arlington County Police to have canine searches in the buildings when students were not present, and those occurred in all of our high school program buildings, where the police came in to see if we could find any illegal substances. I'm happy to report that we did not find any illegal substances. I'm also aware that we did inform folks, but the larger message is, we began a conversation in our community about some of the concerns that we have around substance abuse. If we watch the media, either the newspaper, the television, this is a crisis that we see that is affecting us across our country. So on October the 12th, in collaboration with the Commonwealth Attorney, as well as agencies in the county and the school division, we are going to be holding a Drug Awareness Town Hall there at the Arlington Central Library. I also want to let you know that we are working very closely with all of our principals as we begin the school year to be sending a very positive message and a proactive message about substance abuse, and that we prevent this and we inform not only students but also parents about that. I want to make mention, too, we're working with the CCPTA with this very closely, and individual PTAs, and we've had actually several conversations at the end of the school year, also over the summer months. And then finally, just a reminder of the strong partnership we have with Arlington County Police Department and APS as we move forward for the coming year, and that relationship in supporting students and guiding them. Finally, all this is kind of coupled to the fact, as we kick off the beginning of the new school year, a lot of the safety messages that we have, you'll see a lot of signs up in the community alerting folks to the fact that we are starting school. We also, you may see many of our buses out practicing their bus routes, so we have those routines down. You know, it's kind of a steady diet of reminding not only our students and our parents about wearing appropriate clothing when either coming or going, or biking to school, but also to drivers in the community, as well as our families, that they make sure they have an awareness, especially about the fact that school is starting, and how we take extra precautions and steps to make sure that happens. So I think that is it. We'll be back to you right during the first week of school and kind of go over a number of items that happened on the first day of school. We have a board meeting, I believe it is, on the 7th of September. So I will stop there.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Murphy. We are now at the point of our consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes five to zero. I would like to announce that as part of that consent agenda, the board made a number of appointments. So let me share those with you now, and if you're here, we'd like to recognize you. Let me start with the interim Director of Teaching and Learning, Sarah Putnam. Is Sarah here? There she is. A family, yes. Okay, we're looking forward to meeting the family. Let me tell a little bit about you first, and then we'll go to the fun stuff. Sarah Putnam brings 15 years of experience in education. She joined Arlington Public Schools in 2002 as a classroom teacher at Arlington Traditional School. She went on to be the mathematics coach at Hoffman-Boston Elementary School for several years, and then the elementary mathematics specialist for the Department of Instruction. For the last two years, she has effectively served as the supervisor of mathematics. As the math supervisor, Ms. Putnam has supported teachers throughout APS in implementing inclusive co-teaching environments, engaging in math workshop, and providing high-quality resources. She has a passion for working collaboratively across instructional offices, schools, and classrooms, which make her a strong choice for the interim position of Director of Teaching and Learning. Congratulations, Ms. Putnam. Please do share. We would love to meet all members of your family who've come to support you today. Yeah, yeah. Kindergarten class of, have you been calculating? Looking forward to having her. Thank you so much. And Dr. Natrius, you're here supporting her as well. You're her new boss. Next, we have the Assistant Principal of the Arlington Career Center, Jessica Baker. Jessica Baker has eight years' teaching experience, with five of those as the science instructional team leader at Wakefield High School. In her team leader role, she has led the work to help design and implement large-scale programs and activities for the freshman class at Wakefield, as well as refine the biology curriculum and implementation for student success. Her colleagues and administrators describe her as a well-organized, focused, and goal-oriented master teacher who is reflective in her teaching practice and leadership. She has a strong work ethic and seeks to understand students' strengths and talents in order to bring out their very best. Congratulations, Ms. Baker. I know you have Ms. Chung here supporting you today. Thank you for coming, Principal Chung. Any other supporting cast here? Awesome. APS Teacher of the Year, no less, yes. Fantastic. Thank you for coming to join us today. And just to not put anyone on the spot again, please wave to let me know you have family that you'd like to introduce, and we do want to meet them. Don't pretend you don't have them here if you do. Okay. Next, we have the new Assistant Principal for Drew Elementary School, Tracy Gaither. There she is. I'll read your bio first, and then we... I know, I met your family beforehand, so I know you've got people here. Tracy Gaither has 23 years of teaching experience, of which 11 have been with Arlington Public Schools. Ms. Gaither is a skilled elementary teacher and coach. She has been a classroom teacher at Arlington Traditional, and math coach and lead teacher at Carlin Springs and Oak Ridge Elementary Schools. Ms. Gaither is an educator who effectively engages students by using a variety of instructional strategies and providing motivating learning experiences to meet their individual learning needs. Ms. Gaither is well-known for her ability to masterfully plan and lead professional learning for, and above all, is a thoughtful, kind-hearted, community-centered educator. Congratulations, Ms. Gaither. Please introduce your family, yes. Awesome. Over there, too. Yes, yes. Yes, absolutely.
Will Dr. Limry tell us what year she finished Yorktown?
1993.
Dr. Wright, thank you for coming out and just supporting everyone. That's really nice of you. Okay, next, we have the new Assistant Principal at Gunston Middle School, Shanna Curtis. Ms. Curtis has eight years' teaching experience. For the last year, she has served in dual roles as a special education lead teacher and dean of students at George Mason High School with Falls Church City Public Schools. Her colleagues share that Ms. Curtis is a teacher leader who demonstrates a strong skill in bringing stakeholders together to meet the academic and social-emotional needs of students. She works diligently to encourage and facilitate partnerships between school and home to promote and sustain high expectations for all students. Ms. Curtis has a calm, thoughtful, and positive leadership presence that fosters an environment that makes learning relevant for students and strives to meet the needs of students and staff. Congratulations, Ms. Curtis. Who do you have to share with us today? And I'm pretty sure Principal Wiggins is here. There she is. She's here supporting you as well. There, okay. Fantastic. Thank you all so much. We've got more. We have the new Assistant Principal at Swanson Middle School, Eric Underhill. There he is. Eric Underhill has nine years' teaching experience, all of which have been with Arlington Public Schools. Way to go. Mr. Underhill has worked at all three levels in APS, as an AP teacher at Yorktown High School, world geography teacher at Kenmore Middle School, and most recently, the instructional technology coordinator at Carlin Springs Elementary School. Mr. Underhill believes in authentic and seamless collaboration, he believes in an authentic and seamless collaboration with his colleagues. In all of his instructional roles with APS, he's been a strong supporter and modeler of co-teaching practices. Even as an ITC, he has sought ways to work with classroom teachers to model best instructional practices and personalized learning. Mr. Underhill is a dedicated leader who is committed to student success and growth. He has a strong work ethic and seeks out opportunities to bring creativity and excitement to teaching and learning. Congratulations, Mr. Underhill. Who would you like to introduce? Oh, wow.
My partner Brett, our friends Ashley and Emily.
Fantastic. And Principal Harbor is here as well. Your principal supports you. That's a... And did you say someone else? That's it. Fantastic. Thank you very much. Next, we have the new .5 Assistant Principal at Washington Lee High School, Miles Carey. Mr. Carey has eight years' teaching experience, of which six have been with Arlington Public Schools, as a science teacher at Langston High School Continuation Program. Before coming to APS, Mr. Carey taught eighth-grade science in Richmond City Public Schools. While Mr. Carey is well-known amongst his colleagues and administrators as one who has strong content knowledge and pedagogy, it has been through his leadership roles on the Collaborative Professional Strategies Team and the Teacher Council on Instruction where he has made a significant impact. Mr. Carey is a committed team player who is able to work with students and staff to create positive and engaging learning environments for all students. Congratulations, Mr. Carey. Who would you like to introduce us to? Okay. And do we have an Assistant Principal? Claire Peters? Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming out and supporting Mr. Carey. Next, we are going to name some administrative transfers. These are folks who have taken advantage of the opportunity to broaden their skills and experience a new place in Arlington Public Schools. And we have three people to introduce to you. First, we have Wendy Correa, who is going to become the Supervisor-School Psychologist. There's Wendy. Ms. Correa has 25 years of experience in Arlington Public Schools. She has served in a variety of positions within APS as a school psychologist and supervisor. Throughout her experiences in APS, one passion has continued to stay with her, and that is to ensure the emotional well-being of students, which leads to positive outcomes and student success. She has led several task forces and working groups related to students' emotional well-being in APS and Arlington County Government. Ms. Correa is a licensed, nationally-certified school psychologist who possesses extensive experience in providing and leading professional development training opportunities for student services-related staff, and in working with students, families, and community agencies on mental health issues. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. Correa.
I'm North Mark, and I want to take this moment to thank so many people in this room who have supported me on the journey along the way. It's great to have you here.
Thank you very much for your great work. And finally, we have a switcheroo. We have first, so two people who are switching schools between Swanson and Yorktown. So first, Laura Porter is going to become the Assistant Principal at Swanson. Did I get that right? Laura, yes. Pardon me, I didn't say that definitively enough. It's, I was trying to make sure I didn't cross-read that document, so, yes, Swanson. Ms. Porter has over 15 years in education as a high school science teacher and assistant principal. She is an active leader of the professional learning community at Yorktown High School. She positively and thoughtfully leads discussion on curriculum development, implementation, and student achievement analysis. She is known as a talented and enthusiastic school leader who brings those qualities to her work as a school administrator and former AP Scholars Coordinator. Ms. Porter knows how to create a positive climate that is safe for students but also high in expectations, and she will bring this important capability to her new role as Assistant Principal at Swanson. Thank you very much for being here. Congratulations. I know you're here with Principal Harbor. Thank you very much. Any other introductions for us? Okay. Fantastic. And finally, we have Scott McEwen, who is going to become the Assistant Principal at Yorktown High School. Mr. McEwen has over 15 years of experience as an educator for Arlington Public Schools. He has been a high school English teacher, instructional lead teacher, academic team coach, and for the last seven years, he has served as an Assistant Principal at Swanson Middle School. Ms. McEwen is highly regarded by his colleagues and brings a reputation of one who knows instruction and possesses strong leadership skills. He looks for opportunities to actively involve parents and the school community in students' academic success. Mr. McEwen began his career in high school, and now, after building a strong foundation of the middle school experience, he returns full circle to a leadership role at the high school level. Congratulations. Congratulations. And I know you are here, supported by our new principal at Yorktown, Bridget Loft. Ann Swanson, Ann Swanson. I like, I like how people are supporting each other on the way in and the way out. That's really great. Any other introductions?
No, that's it.
Okay. Fantastic. Congratulations once again to everyone. Good, round of applause to the whole group. I should say, and congratulations, Dr. Christy Murphy, for getting this done. Nice, nice work. We, at, the next point in our agenda is the citizen comment on non-agenda items, and we promised that these would never start before 7:00 PM, and it looks like we filled that time quite nicely. So first, I would like to review speaker guidelines. Oh, yes. We probably will have people who don't want to stay, so yeah, we'll let a little buzz happen for a moment. I can't remember when we've had this many family members come out in support of their new, their family. It's really nice. Yeah, yeah. Supportive family. Shut the door? Okay, I don't know if the door's been shut, it's a little bit of, we are now, as I mentioned, at the point of citizen comment on non-agenda items. The school board welcomes public comment. Generally, school board members do not respond to comments during the meetings. Speakers must submit a speaker slip to the clerk before the agenda item they wish to speak on is called. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. There is a timer to help you keep track of your time, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the buzzer sounds. All comments should address a matter related to Arlington Public Schools. Speakers should be courteous and address their comments to the entire school board. Speakers are called in the order in which they sign up. If you have written comments, please give them to the clerk. We ask the audience to refrain from applauding as this takes time away from our speakers. And I see there is a quick clarification question from the audience.
Where are the speaker slips? For those of us who signed up online, I didn't realize we needed a speaker slip as well.
You don't need to submit a paper speaker slip if you sign up online.
Interesting point, we could clarify our guidelines. If you signed up online, you're signed up. This meant, this referred to also for people who came in at the last minute. Clarification question, yes?
Is it possible to just sneak in another person to add one to the speaker?
If you can quickly grab a speaker slip and get it to the clerk, I think, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, and at this point, Ms. Elliott, do we have speakers?
Yes, we do. I believe we have eight on the non-agenda items.
Okay.
Been a little shifting, so I may, my count may be off. Our first speaker is Mr. John Peck.
Good evening. Can you hear me from this distance? Thank you. Good evening, Chair Cannon and members of the Arlington School Board. My name is John Peck, and as you know, I am a proud Washington Lee alum. It's been a tough week for me. As a son of a Philippine immigrant, this weekend's events in Charlottesville have been particularly disturbing and painful for my family and me. But I hope optimistically that those events will provide us with an educational opportunity. It would be easier to condemn the name Lee, erase it, and move on, but my burden is the intimate knowledge I have, I have of the school's incredible 92-year history, a legacy that cannot be separated from the school's name. It's a legacy that includes the 1966 state championship basketball team, the first integrated team to win the state title. The school unified around that team. In fact, the school became a model for schools throughout Northern Virginia in terms of racial unity. That legacy also includes the fight to integrate our schools, a fight which Washington Lee and Stratford both are very, very much a part of. It includes those students who left to fight in World War II, who gave their lives, who are memorialized today on a plaque at the high school. It also includes those international students who've been a part of Washington Lee since its earliest years. And I'm proud to say that the school's first Filipino graduate was in 1931. But it's also our duty right now to educate ourselves about the school's name and, yes, Robert E. Lee. Washington Lee High School was named after Washington and Lee University, according to published school accounts. Moreover, both the high school and the university share some of the exact same traditions. So it is incumbent upon us to study Lee's public service after the Civil War. The university would be a great historical resource, and since Arlington is the home of the Arlington House, the Robert E. Lee Memorial, the National Park Service should also be consulted. I know of one excellent book on Lee's post-Civil War life, Lee: The Last Years, by Charles Braceley Flood. A few quotes. During Reconstruction in the late spring of 1867, Lee exhorted a Confederate widow to not train her children in hostility to the government of the United States, but to dismiss all sectional feelings and bring them up as Americans. As part of his educational reforms as president of Washington College, he pushed for a curriculum that focused on Latin American studies, and that would introduce the Spanish language based on his experience in Latin America during the Mexican-American War. Lee also believed that the erection of Confederate memorials would keep alive the wartime passions that he was trying to eradicate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Ryan Sims.
The time has come to remove the name of Robert E. Lee from Washington Lee High School. The legacy of General Lee is clear. An avowed white supremacist, he took up arms against the United States to preserve the institution of slavery. The purpose of deploying Lee's name in the public sphere from Reconstruction through the end of Jim Crow is no less ambiguous. The veneration of Confederate icons throughout the South ensured every citizen understood that racist local and state institutions remain committed to denying the basic rights of African-Americans, often violently so. Today, Lee remains a potent symbol of hate as witnessed by the tragedy in Charlottesville. These recent events and their aftermath add urgency to repudiating Lee's legacy in our community as we work together to create a more just, inclusive, and dynamic future. It is time for Arlington Public Schools to acknowledge its history, accept responsibility, and remove Lee's name. In this task, Arlington is not alone. School boards across the country have been increasingly unable to reconcile the racist, divisive, violent, and revisionist implications of honoring Confederate figures with the basic tenets of public education. In recent years, the pace of renaming schools has accelerated, with Texas alone replacing at least 10. Closer to home, the Fairfax County School Board's decision to rename Jeb Stuart High School is the culmination of a long, messy, and contentious process. In this, Arlington Public Schools can do better, better than deflecting responsibility through online polls, competing pro-con lists, dueling reports, and ill-defined regulations, better than setting community members against each other on a futile two-year quest to prove which side is right. The act of doing better begins with recognizing the obvious. There is no single correct interpretation of what it means to have Robert E. Lee's name on our high school. There are many reasonable ones. The school board can spend considerable time and resources soliciting as many as possible. Critically, though, one interpretation the board cannot escape, no matter how many valid alternatives are collected, is that a public school dedicated in honor of the Confederacy's greatest icon at the height of the Jim Crow era, in a state plagued by racial violence that would later engage in unlawful massive resistance to prevent desegregation of its schools, was not and is not benign. The reasonableness of that interpretation, which relies only on the history we teach in our schools, makes preserving Lee's name on our high school fundamentally untenable. Personal attachments do not change history. Local associations cannot drain the power from national symbols of hate. Inconvenience does not absolve the school board of its responsibilities. As Confederate monuments and symbols continue to fall across the nation, it is worth considering the difference between history and how we view history. Removing a statue, lowering a flag, or renaming a school doesn't change history. It is the continuation of the never-ending process of interpreting and telling the histories that resonate with our present. The truth is that nobody has ever learned about an historical figure from the letters affixed to a building. This is not about preserving the past. It is about the same thing now as it was in 1925 when Washington Lee opened its doors, defining the present. We have an obligation to ensure a school environment free of the echoes of harassment, intimidation, and violence that still emanate from the symbol of Robert E. Lee. They are not worthy of preservation. It is time to remove the name of Robert E. Lee from Washington Lee High School.
Our next speaker is Mark Bieler.
Well, he's coming up. I did forget to mention, if you want to, to applaud, but we prefer not to have that so that we can move on quickly. A gesture like this works really well. It's very visible to everyone. Thank you.
Hi, Mark Bieler. I'm with Indivisible Arlington. The tragic events of this week have brought to the fore the anticipated, I'm sorry, the antiquated and morally repugnant name of one of our high schools. All over this country, monuments and related forms of recognition of those who fought to preserve slavery in America are being removed or renamed. Alexandria is in the process of renaming Jefferson Davis Highway. Two nights ago, Baltimore moved quickly to remove four Confederate monuments, and we all know what Charlottesville is doing. The list is now long and growing daily. The members of the school, the current school board were not responsible for the shameful naming of Washington Lee High School. That was done, I believe, in 1925 at a time when Virginia was still a bastion of segregation and racist terrorism, when lynching and racist mob violence were sanctioned and all too common. But this board is now responsible for the decision of whether or not to retain that name. I was fortunate to have attended Abraham Lincoln High School in Brooklyn. I can only imagine the impact on the psyche of an African-American student spending several formative years in the confines of the building next door, one that bears the name of the general that led the Confederate Army's violent effort to maintain the enslavement of his or her people, along with the name of a president who himself was a plantation owner, slave owner. We cannot tolerate this any longer. Conservative columnist Jennifer Rubin wrote this in The Washington Post. Every member of Congress should do his or her utmost to remove the neo-Nazi iconography in their districts and states. Neo-Nazis have claimed the Confederacy as their own and therefore have reminded the rest of us that the Confederate statues are not tributes to patriotism, gallantry, or liberty, but to treason, inhumanity, and slavery. That is why neo-Nazis identify with these symbols of the Old South. That is why they have no place in a democratic society built on the principle that all men are created equal. State and local officials need to carefully examine school curriculum to make sure students are not confused as to the heroes and villains in the Civil War, end quote. The name of this high school is itself a source of that confusion. It emits the hypocritical, hypocritical and shameful message of moral equivalency between those who fought for freedom and those who fought for slavery. It is a reinforcement of the racist ideology of the lost cause. We must build on the momentum of the current crisis and use this as a powerful teaching moment for the students of Arlington Schools. Let us act now in the memory of Heather Heyer, who gave her life in this cause. This board should move quickly to establish a public commission for the explicit purpose of finding a suitable name to replace Washington Lee. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Zaman.
Hi, members of the board and the superintendent. I was going to speak, but this is a former alumni of Arlington, so I'm going to cede my floor to him. This is Julian.
Thank you. To begin, I must apologize, I was under the impression I was speaking on the agenda item, I'm speaking on a non-agenda item, and I must particularly apologize because I'm a Yorktown graduate, and I stand present by the walls of my mortal enemy, York, WNA High School, so I'll refrain from hollering Yorktown rules. WNA sucks. So, though history is often written by the victor as opposed to the loser, the truth in it remains somewhat solidified and impartial, so unless there is a brutal reinvention of the facts like some regimes out there, this means we remain to live in the shadow of our past. History is still there, still present, and its new instruments fashioned out of the old. Its same grounds we still tread. It is how we got here. Where we'd be somewhere else, far away, had the Berlin Wall not fallen, had Arlington remained in the District of Columbia, had the Union lost the war, but as many alternate timeline television shows they make, no matter what demonyms we embrace or what flags we wave, we exist in one reality. And in this reality, no matter how much we bicker and beef and threaten the Seventeenth Amendment, we are one united States of America. And so I say this only days removed from what looked like a cold-blooded American dissolution, the tragedies that occurred not so far away in Charlottesville, Virginia, where our mismatched confrontation of history has brought on the town pouring storms of hatred, floods of bloodshed, and the innecessary extremity of other agony. How flat my words might fall here in Arlington, in the walls of an American apex, an institution usually stuffed to the brim with the brilliance and potential of over 2,000 students who are often offered the best public agitation taxation can afford, yet is in an institution that bears the name of one of America's greatest oppressors. But before I even mention the name, make no mistake that there is nothing inherently sinister in the word. The taps on the human element, it is kept to label things as good as bad, appropriate or inappropriate, right or wrong. Nothing truly justifies the sound which remains taboo or which holds no weight whatsoever. Skip, okay. Words can dictate wars or peace, that the mountains move, that the oceans dry, signify the just and the unjust. So in that Lee, referring to Confederate Army of Northern Virginia General Robert "Ed" Lord Lee, slave holder, slave owner, so beholden to our great state that he tangled in the moral and political barbed wire of a slavery debate, foregoing his brilliance to resign in the defense of humanity's greatest backwards institutions, we must now confront and furthermore rectify how we must choose to commemorate our history. So I call in defense of the name or in fervent opposition of it. I call, as I always do, for appropriate conversation. Addressing my friends from Indivisible, recognize that this is not our decision to make. And in the decision of the Washington Lee community, it is particularly the student and the minority communities who might bear the greater stake in the matter going forward. And in addressing the many alumni and defenders in retaining the name, do not feel removed and confused by this pressure, which threatened the title carried proudly since 1925, but please understand that the ears of this moment are rushing, blowing towards change. It may be necessary or unnecessary.
Thank you, thank you very much. We do need to be consistent with the amount of time people have. We really wanted to hear the end. You can submit written comments. If you don't have them today, you can email us. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Leoni Alder.
I'm a student at Washington Lee High School. I'm going into my senior year. I think that we should get rid of the Lee part of Washington Lee. I think that the name of the school should reflect the students in the school. I think that it's important to remember history, but we don't need to celebrate an oppressor. Every day, I walk by at least two or three portraits of a Confederate general in my own school. I think as a place of education and inclusivity and diversity that this is inappropriate and unacceptable. That's just my short statement. Thank you.
Yeah, it really does help to just have, to move on to the next. Thanks for the gestures.
Our next speaker is Liz Ryan. I'm not sure if she made it. You have your statement? Okay.
Sorry. One second. Dear Arlington School Board members, as an Arlington resident and a neighbor of Washington Lee High School, I respectfully request that you immediately initiate actions to change the name of Washington Lee High School, to remove Lee from the name of the school. For far too long, relics of Confederacy and our tragic legacy of chattel slavery have been allowed to stand in Arlington and elsewhere in our state. This has been harmful to our community and upholds white supremacy, which I and many others do not support. It is past time that Arlington takes a leadership role in undoing the harms of our legacy of slavery and the Confederacy and begin a process of community dialogue and racial healing. Changing the name of Washington Lee would be one step in this direction. The community could be invited to participate in a transparent process for deciding the new name. I appreciate your consideration and look forward to discussion with you on how to potentially move this kind of process forward. Sincerely, Liz Ryan. She lives across the street.
Thank you. Next, we have Basil Kiwan.
Did I press a button? Oh, no, I don't.
Nope, I don't.
Well, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, members of the community, I don't actually have a prepared statement because this is a very last-minute thing for me, but I do want to echo what the other people say. I do request that the school board initiate a process to change the name of Washington and Lee High School. You know, the... You know, the, the school was built in 1924 and opened its doors in 1925, which was the height of Jim Crow, and the name Robert E. Lee was deliberately chosen as part of the lost cause iconography to represent sort of white supremacy forever and to reinforce that message to African-American and other minority communities. That was, you know, the Arlington of the past. That was Arlington that was a rural county, much smaller population and a less nice population, put it that way. But this is not the Arlington of today, and it certainly isn't the Washington and Lee High School of today. It's a diverse, highly educated, affluent area, and we need a name that reflects our community. So, I think, and I think, you know, in the conversations that have ensued in the, in the wake of the tragedy in Charlottesville, it's clear that there is a lot of ignorance and rancor, and a lot of people in, in our state who still cling to this lost cause mythology that Robert E. Lee, you know, was some kind of abolitionist, that he didn't own slaves when he didn't, when he did, that the war, the Civil War was about states' rights, and putting his name on a high school is propagating that kind of false history. There, and there is, you know, one of the prior speakers made a very good point, that there are, there is no, you know, history is a process. You constantly learn, and maybe we were that ignorant back in 1924, but we're not that ignorant now. And I think for our, our children and for the next generations going forward, we want them to be more humane, better informed, better understand their history, and kind of reflective of the diversity and the strength that that brings our community, our state and our country. So I would ask you to initiate the process as soon as possible to change the name of Washington Lee High School, to drop the name of Robert E. Lee, and either leave it as Washington High School, or find the name of another Virginian who doesn't have, whose name is not trucked with the, the legacy of slavery and segregation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nick Roy.
I'm the father of three graduates of the Wash, of the Arlington, of the Washington, sorry, of the Arlington Public School System, including Washington Lee, and I love, love Washington Lee. I think it's done just a terrific job of educating our, our kids. And I'm very proud of you and of your, your predecessors and, and of no doubt of your successors for creating, for, for your stewardship of this jewel that is the Arlington Public School System. I, I have no doubt that the criteria that, that you described earlier, Madam Chairman, that you'll be developing will, will be terrific and will actually be a national model, and, and that the exercise that you'll go through will, will have been a really, a really important exercise and valuable for Arlington for, for years to come, and, and really probably for that, for the rest of the country in a lot of ways. That said, I, I think it's, I think there's a moral urgency to changing the name of, of Washington Lee High School that, that is deserving of, of a, a second track for that specific issue, and I would really urge that, that you consider that. Two, I, I'd like to share with you two thoughts. My father was from India. In, in India, we, there's a, a 5,000-year-old symbol, it's the swastika. You, you go to India, it's a, it's a, it's a symbol in India of, of peace, harmony, well-being. It's a very, very beautiful symbol in that context. As, as much as I would love to use that symbol in my home to reflect the, the beauty and the value of it in, in my father's country, I obviously can't do that because it means something horrible in, in the, in the West, outside of India. The, the, I'm, I'm, whatever we may attribute to Lee the man, Lee the symbol has now become associated with that same sort of thing. He, the, the symbol is quite different from the man, the symbol is quite different from the history, and, and I would urge you to, to, to think about how we've associated that symbol with, with this place of learning for our children. Second story, my, my, one of my daughters is, is associated with Amherst University in Amherst, Massachusetts. The mascot of Amherst, Massachusetts was a, was a British general, Lord Geoffrey Amherst, and he was, he was actually very pro-American. He, he was a, a big general in the French and Indian War, and, and really lots of terrific attributes, but one really horrible one, which is that he gave blankets infected with smallpox to the Native Americans. He conducted German warfare against the Native Americans. The, the college has just gone through a big process to determine whether to have a, a new mascot, and they, they, it, it broke down largely between alumni who wanted to keep the mascot, students who wanted to get rid of it, the young lady, I, I think said it right, that really, the, the question is largely with the students. If there's a breakdown, I would go with what the students are saying. Thank you.
And our final speaker on this topic, topic is Mila Albertson.
Hi, I'm Mila Albertson. I'm a proud graduate of WNL, class of 66. I am the current president of the Washington Lee Alumni Association, which supports the school in many, many ways. This same topic came up several years ago, and there were articles written about trying to change the name, and I'm going to read something that one of my older classmates from the class of 58 wrote. To suggest that sending a child to learn under the name of Lee somehow sullies the students' learning, as one writer suggests, is to ignore fact. I'm not aware that Washington Lee has turned out millions of graduates who believe in the idea of slavery because they learned under the name of a Confederate general. Quite the contrary, in its now 95 years of incomparable teaching, it has graduated tens of thousands of exceptional students and solid citizens, leaders in every field of human endeavor, and hundreds of national merit scholars. It has sustained a reputation for excellence, recognized nationally. One need only look at the recent annual reports of the Washington Lee High School Alumni Foundation, Foundation, to see that exemplary learning continues to scholars and scholars of all races, supported with grants from the alumni of WNL. Apparently, these scholars were not impaired by the name use. The name Washington Lee High School is exalted because of its graduates, not because of the two men whose names it bears. I'm being polite for those calling for renaming WNL when I say it is irrational. Do we change the name of Stratford Junior High School because it is named for Robert E. Lee's birthplace? Ironically, Stratford is the first school in Virginia to desegregate in 1958. A historic marker in front of the school proclaims that fact. Is that not history to celebrate the name of Lee's early home? Do we ban the Virginia state flag because it reminds us that the Commonwealth protected slaveholders? Do we rename Virginia, or for that matter, all Confederate states because theirs were the names of slave states? Do we rename the city of Richmond because it reminds us it was the capital of the rebellion? These are the logical and irrational extensions of this move to erase the names and symbols of the Confederacy. I would remind you that President Lincoln called for reconciliation of the Union and the forgiveness of the people of the South, including its leaders. He welcomed them back into the Union as Americans. Can we not honor and follow his magnanimous lead? Please look at the history of what Mr. Lee did after the Civil War. He renounced the Confederate flag. He set up the law school at Washington and Lee University, which is different from Washington Lee High School. We do not have any and in it. We are proud WNLers, we are proud generals, we lead the patriots and the warriors at our other schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe I did accidentally skip one speaker. Are you Ms. Mosher?
No.
Oh, okay. I got your statement, but I didn't get a speaker slip, so I wasn't. It must have gotten lost, but I did.
I signed up online, but you didn't call my name. Mary Beth Matthews?
Let's go ahead and proceed, and Ms. Elliott will check that.
I did not receive that slip.
Chair Cannon and board members, Dr. Murphy, fellow citizens, thank you for this opportunity. I urge you to recognize that now is the time to rename Washington Lee Heights, High School to undo the honor given to Robert E. Lee. Although I am not a native Virginian, I am a daughter of the South. I grew up in suburban Atlanta, attended William &amp; Mary, and have been an Arlington resident since 1989, proud parent of a Yorktown graduate. Two of my great-grandfathers on my mother's side held enslaved people in Texas and Tennessee. Another great-grandfather on my father's side was wounded during the siege of Petersburg as a soldier with the 43rd Alabama Infantry. So I know the history of the cause that Lee fought for, but I hold no allegiance to it. It was a lost cause from the beginning because it denied the fundamental claim of every person to be recognized as a full human being with liberty. No society should honor with school and street names those who threatened that most cherished value, as Robert E. Lee did when he broke his U.S. Army oath in order to serve the Confederacy. We Arlingtonians have a duty here because we know our history, not because we want to erase or hide it, because Robert E. Lee made his home here in the Custis Lee Mansion, because Arlington County was home for 20 years to the American Nazi Party, but also because Gloria Thompson, Ronald Deskins, Lance Newman, and Michael Jones walked into Stratford Junior High School on February 2nd, 1959, to begin the process of desegregating Virginia public schools. Because of all this, we have a duty to be in the vanguard of communities across this great nation who are rethinking and withdrawing past honors from Confederate leaders, now that we know, as we always should have known, that they are held as powerful suprem, symbols by white supremacists, Nazis, and fascists, so potent that those purveyors of hatred will kill to protect them. I therefore applaud the commitment that Dr. Cannon had described at the beginning of this session tonight, to establish clear naming criteria in a public process that I hope will result in the choice of great inspiring names for new schools, and more urgently, a new name for the high school next door. Thank you for your time.
Go ahead. It must have been a technical glitch. I did not receive it.
Yeah, I'll check and see.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm not with Indivisible Arlington, but I'm glad to hear that they came as well. My name is Mary Beth Matthews, and I'm a historian and college professor. My daughter graduated in June from Washington Lee High School, and it's that name change I'd like to address this evening. I strongly urge Arlington County School Board to change the name of the high school to something more inclusive and appropriate. Washington Lee was named in 1925, on July 31st, to be precise, at a school board meeting much like this one. How do I know? Because I spent some time down the street at the Center for Local History at the Central Library here in Arlington and read the minute book for the 1920s. During the years leading up to the name, as the school board was planning the school, it was referred to as Central High School, and its construction suffered from setbacks, including financial difficulties and infrastructure issues. They spent some time, for example, figuring out where to dig the well, as well as community opposition to building the school. The minutes indicate that the local leaders advised the School Federation of Arlington County to endorse the name Washington Lee. A quick look at other pages in the same minutes book illustrates the segregation and discriminations, discrimination that students of color faced in Arlington. In October 1923, one school board member moved that all white students get November 1st off to attend the laying of the cornerstone of the Washington Memorial, what we now call the Masonic Memorial near the King Street Metro Station. Colored students, as they were called, weren't allowed such amusements. They weren't even, they weren't even allowed a new high school in 1924, as the school board heard but refused to take action on a request from this Colored Citizens Association of Arlington to build a new high school for black students. Washington Lee was named during a time when Virginia schools were segregated, and the entire governmental system in Virginia was organized around segregation and oppression of African-Americans. The state had convened a constitutional convention in 1901 to disenfranchise black voters and protect the separate but equal sham perpetrated in the wake of Plessy v. Ferguson. Not coincidentally, it was during this same period that Virginia, along with other southern states, erected monuments to the Confederacy and celebrated a South that never really existed. It's no coincidence that 10 years before Washington Lee High School was named, was the year that the modern Ku Klux Klan organized itself in Georgia and spread across the South and Midwest. The naming of an Arlington school after a Confederate general, a man who owned slaves and took up arms, however reluctantly, against his own country, was then and still is a message to African-Americans that their place in society is tenuous, and that their opinions and their perspectives on history matter less than those of white people long dead. We should change the name now.
I think we're finished now.
Okay, is there anyone who thought they signed up online that we didn't, whose name didn't come up?
I thought I had signed up, but...
On non-agenda?
Uh, yes, it was on non-agenda.
Do you want to go ahead and, and come up?
Yes.
Thank you. Please just announce your name, since we don't have a record at the moment.
My name is Valerie Smith, and I just... My name is Valerie Smith, and I am a grandparent of two Arlington County students. They were Wakefield High School. I have one who's a graduate and one who is a potential graduate. And my concern that I had wanted to have addressed was the at-risk students. And the question that I wish to raise to this board...
Do you mind, I, I think you might be signed up under Academic Performance Update.
Okay, all right, so...
You think, that's the case, yeah, I think you're the next, actually, yes, yes. Thank you so much. Sorry for the confusion. Normally, and for consistency, this is not a point in our school board meeting when school board members make comments, that's for consistency. Different topics can come to us during non-agenda, and we want to, we want to be fair to all. However, there's one board member who has asked to have the floor to, to comment, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Lander.
Thank you. I appreciate Madam Chair and my colleagues accommodate me just a, a, a couple of quick minutes. I want to first thank everyone who came out to speak and the folks who will speak later this evening. I, we as a board listen to and, and welcome citizens and comment. Recently, we had a, a large group of students come speak to us about diversity. We had a conversation about boundary and inclusion, and so as we continue to evolve as a community, as a society, one of the challenges that's always difficult is people say they want diversity, they want inclusion, until they hear something that they don't like. And so, as I said, I thank all of the speakers from the various points of view that were articulated this evening. And I, I am a graduate of the University of Virginia. I'm also a veteran of the United States Navy, and on a more personal note, I would like to ask us not to take our eye off of the ball. Conversations about swastikas and, and, and white nationalists and, and racists, for most people, are easy to denounce and to repudiate. But as we talk about history, and we talk about the difficult conversation about race in a country that has had its ebbs and flows, its ups and downs, and, and a painful discussion about relationships between people of different backgrounds, different religions, and sexual orientations, is one that challenges us to, to look inside and, and to face our own fears and challenge ourselves with our known and unknown biases. And I bring that up because, as I've been on the board longer than anyone here, the conversation about Washington Lee name change is not a new one. We get letters and information from community members every year about the name change. I personally, not as a board member, but as a black man who lives in Arlington, hasn't, haven't focused on the name of Washington Lee because unfortunately, I'm concerned about our young men and girls in Arlington Public Schools of Color who face dangers every day when they walk out their door. And for our young people who have been so passionately energized this week because of what happened in Charlottesville, I applaud you. When I was in college, Rodney King was beaten, and it was taped on TV, and today we're still seeing young black men killed by the police, unarmed, shot in the back, reaching for their license. The challenges in the conversations about race is one that we need to have as a community. It should be a thoughtful one, and it should be one where we keep our eyes and our ears open and listen to people who think differently than us. We will, as our board chair articulated, have a thoughtful conversation about name changes, but don't focus too much on the names of buildings and streets. Our young people need our guidance and our advice and our examples, and a thoughtful dialogue about how we talk about Islam, Hinduism, Buddhism. And if we want to teach history, let's start with Paul Lewis And if we want to teach history, let's start with Paul Lewis Lawrence Dunbar, Harriet Tugman, Frederick Douglass, Ozzy Davis, Paul Robeson, El Haji Malik Shabazz. There's a number of folks who aren't in your history book that we can have conversations about to teach and educate our children to be more inclusive and more thoughtful and more tolerant of one another, because we're not the same society we were in 1904, 1924, and we're not the same society we were when I was in college back in the 1990s. So, I just want to bring that up, because we tend to get a flood of emails when there's a failed leadership or something recent that happens. We get emails every year about Washington Lee. We listen to it, but we're trying to educate our children. We're growing 1,000 students a year. We're trying to build, so we're going to have a thoughtful process. We won't have a knee-jerk reaction to name change, but it will be a thoughtful dialogue. I hope after I transition off the board, I continue to be a part of it. I'm the liaison to facilities, so if you have emails, forward them to the board chair, so she can read them and deal with them. But I just don't want us to take our eye off of the ball and the children who are looking to us for examples. And we can have a thoughtful conversation, and we will, about naming schools beyond just Washington Lee and all the other stuff, but there's a lot of history that's not being told. Let's start telling that. I did not know about the swastika symbol in India, so now I got to educate on my cellphone and learn about that. That is what we're in the business of doing. We're an education system, and I thank you again for the diverse points of view. I want, we want to hear from people who don't think like this. That's how we educate ourselves. So I thank my colleagues again for an opportunity to put this forward. We've been having this discussion behind scenes, and our chair made a very clear and articulate statement about how we're going to move forward. So I just want to reassure everyone that we will have this, but we will not do it in a knee-jerk reaction or based on something that just happened last week, because that's not thoughtful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lander. Thank you, Mr. Lander, and I do want to confirm that we do, that all emails are shared with the full board, and we do read them. We are going to have to move on with our agenda, but I think I have one more board member who would like the floor for just a few comments, and then we'll move on with our meeting agenda.
Thank you, and thank you to my colleague, Mr. Lander, for his articulate and heartfelt remarks. I just want to make a few comments specifically about what the chair spoke of earlier tonight on establishing a naming committee and developing criteria for our schools. So, the violence that motivated this action and the sentiments that motivated this action and the causes that motivated this action should not motivate snap decisions by elected officials. Developing a policy to guide naming of schools needs well-informed and reflective deliberation. Because of the issues that the chair spoke of, specifically how do we manifest today's community values, an effort to develop naming criteria and guidelines must have the broadest reach. There must be an opportunity to hear every voice: parents, students, teachers, alumni, non-alumni, historians, non-APS-affiliated community members, people from all stripes and backgrounds. Everyone must offer their thoughts about the image we want for our schools, because those will be the legacies that this community will have to live with. To me, the overriding pedagogical question that this group must address is how do we treat history that's uncomfortable? History that does not conform to today's mores? Do we teach it? Do we acknowledge that it's part of the diverse influences that made our society what it is today? Or do we sweep it into the back room of the museum? It's very, very important that we do this right, or we're going to keep doing it over and over again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going to move on with our agenda to our monitoring item, which is an Academic Performance Update. We would love for folks to stay if they would like to, but we understand that that doesn't always happen. So, we would ask that as you exit to please, you know, keep your voices down so we can move on with our meeting. Thank you all so much for coming out.
Thank you.
There we go.
Do not.
Let's just give it a quick moment for... So, our next item, we're beginning our monitoring section of our agenda, the Academic Performance Update. Dr. Murphy, would you like to introduce this update?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cannon. I'm going to turn here to Dr. Tara Nattress. And Dr. Nattress, our Assistant Superintendent for Department of Instructions, is going to bring us the academic update for the past year. We have just gotten a lot of this information over the summer from some of the results that we had back in the spring, and we're also using these results to begin the planning process for the coming year, as far as where we need to begin to focus and the priorities that we're going to be setting. So, while I know she'll lead us through kind of an update as far as that performance, we'll also begin to talk about those plans as we move forward and how we address some of the needs and support that we have identified through this presentation. So, Dr. Nattress, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. As Dr. Murphy said, I will be talking this evening about some of our academic achievement data. We are continuing to update this data as we receive information on surrounding systems, as well as pull out some additional data for APS. I actually want to start by talking a little bit about how we look at data and look at multiple measures to monitor our performance. So, when we're talking about data, we're really looking at multiple layers of data analysis. We analyze data from the system level, the school level, grades and departments, all the way down to the student, because the student is really at the center of all of our work. And so, I will talk this evening about some of the work we're doing to really dig into the needs of individual students, while also giving an overview of where we are as a system. One of the other things to keep in mind with our data is that while I will present this evening a lot of academic achievement data, we also pay close attention to things like attendance, things like discipline data, graduation rates, student engagement, our formative assessments. So, I am not presenting all of that this evening. This really is intended to be kind of a global snapshot of where we are as a school system. Over the course of the last year or so, we've been talking about what are those things that we use to really measure our success. One of the key pieces of data that we look at are the standards of learning. These are annual assessments that provide information as a component of Virginia's accountability system. Those assessments are for grades three through 12. So, we also look at other data sources to see where we are for our students in kindergarten through second grade, to make sure that they are achieving their early literacy skills and are on the path really particularly to be successful in the area of reading. So, for that, we use what is known as PALS. When you hear that out in the community, it is the phonological awareness literacy screening, and it really is a screening, diagnostic, and progress monitoring tool to help us make sure that students are on track with their early literacy skills. We also use the reading inventory, as well as the math inventory, at the middle school level to provide some additional information, really for instructional purposes. And then, we also use the WEDA Access, which is a large-scale English language proficiency assessment that we give each January through March for our English learners. This evening, I'm really going to focus on the standards of learning, because that is the achievement data that we have most recently received, as well as the PALS data and a little bit of connection to WEDA Access. Before we dig into the specifics, I want to share some of the highlights. Dr. Murphy alluded to these earlier when he was making his announcements. The first is that all of our schools are accredited, so that is great news for us as a system. We have also met or exceeded state standards of learning proficiency rates on 28 of 29 assessments across all grade levels and subjects. We have exceeded the state standards of learning proficiency rates by more than, equal to or more than five percentage points on 17 of those assessments. And when I show you some of our graphs a bit later, you will see that our rate of improvement is higher than the state in science, as well as in history and social studies. So, when we look at data, what we're really looking at is comparison data across our system with schools, comparison data across other districts, and then how are we doing comparably to the state as well? And I think one of the things to really highlight is that we have consistently high performance. At least 86% of our students are proficient in all content areas, and that has been consistent over the last several years. The students for whom we are measuring this achievement have continued to grow over the last decade. You can see, and this has been a conversation across the system, as we continue to grow, from 2006, we had 18,451 students. In September of 2016, so a year ago, we had 26,152. Dr. Murphy alluded to enrollment for this school year, and we will have that membership count September 30th, so this is actually a year ago, as we look at those numbers. One other piece of a measure of success is the student enrollment in our advanced courses. We are working very hard to ensure that all of our students are challenged on a regular daily basis, and part of that is enrollment in our advanced courses. We will talk this evening about some of the performance of our English learners, and I think highlighting here that we continue to increase the enrollment in advanced courses for our English learners. Students who are at a level five and six, which are WEDA proficiency levels, you can see enrollment has increased from 27% to 32% over the last three years. And when we look at our English learners who are proficient in comparison to students who are not English learners, we are very close in terms of the enrollment in those courses. So, access is something to consider as we are talking about our achievement. So, let's dig in. We're going to be looking at four content areas this evening, and we're going to start with reading. There are three charts here. The one to the left, as I said earlier, part of what we like to look at is our comparison data between Arlington Public Schools and the state of Virginia. You can see that for reading, we are about 7% of our students... I'm not saying that well at all. So, we have 87% proficiency. The state has 80%, so we have 7% higher performance in terms of proficiency than the state. When you look in the middle, what we are looking at are reporting groups, and so you can see that over the last three years, we have had an increase for our black student performance from 74% to 76% proficient. And then, when you look to the right, we are looking at economically disadvantaged. Our English learners is EL, and then students with disabilities is the SWD. So, you can see within this chart that our English learners have made some pretty significant gains over the last three years, from 64% proficient to 69% proficient. And one of the things that we look at, we will often see a one- or two-point percentage difference in proficiency. This is a five-point percentage difference over those three years, so we do want to highlight that. We have also noted that for our students with disabilities, that while we had an increase from 2015 to 2016 from 59% to 60%, we had a 60% proficiency rate from 2016 to 2017. And so, as we note and look at our data, we will see increases in most content areas for our black students and our English learners. We are noting that for our students with disabilities, our data is flat. In some areas, we've also seen a couple of increases that I'll speak to. But part of our work really this year is to dig into this data and implement some very specific strategies. So, I want to talk for just a minute about some of those strategies for reading for our students with disabilities. One of the key steps that we are really looking at is inclusion, and one of the reasons that we are looking at inclusion is because we believe very strongly in co-teaching, which allows for students to be in the classroom, getting grade-level content with content-area experts, as well as special education teachers who are providing the specially-designed instruction. So, as we look at trying to ensure that our students are learning at high levels, one of the strategies is inclusion. Another is to really support specific instructional strategies. So, we talked some last spring about the Arlington-tiered system of support and providing a protocol for teachers around specific interventions. So, if there is a student who needs additional support with phonemic awareness, here are three or four interventions that are evidence-based that we can implement. And so, that's another piece that we will be looking very closely at. And then, we're also doing, as I showed in one of the first slides, those levels of analysis. We've broken this data down by grade level and also by strand to see where the needs. And so, for example, when you look at our students with disability data, this is an overall picture of third grade through 12th grade, all of the assessments, and all of the students are in that data. So, what we've done is look at the individual assessments and noted where there are successes and where there are areas for improvement. So, when you look at our high school data and you look at each of the strands, our students have a lot of strengths. One of the things that we have noted in our third-grade data is that students need additional support in fiction text and comprehension of fiction text. And so, we're getting really specific. And in some of our conversations that we had last spring, we talked about, okay, we've seen the data. What really are the needs of our kids, and what are we going to do about it? So, third grade, reading comprehension and fiction text. Here are the three things we're going to do to address that, and it's inclusion, specific instructional strategies, and our ATSS model. So, we're looking at data like this, but we're also getting much more specific. Here's another example of that specificity. This is a chart that we saw last year with the ESAL-Hiltz Monitoring Report, where we looked at our students' English proficiency levels and levels of proficiency in alignment. So, you can see in this, the orange is from 2015-16. The blue lines are 2016-17. What we expect to see is a stair step. As students grow in English proficiency, we would expect to see higher rates of proficiency on the standards of learning exam. And so, what you see in the blue for this past year, we had a 50% pass rate for our students who are considered ELP Level 1. So, that's a Level 1 on the WEDA assessment. We had 50% proficiency, and then when you get to Level 2, it's about 18. And then, if you follow the blue, it pretty much is that stair step. What I want to highlight is that once our English learners are proficient, 92.7% proficiency on the SOL, which is identical, actually to the decimal point amazingly, as our non-English learners. So, you see that stair step again as we look at our data for this year. I would also note that we just yesterday compared our data to our English learner data specifically to Alexandria, Fairfax, Loudon, Manassas City, Prince William, and we are outperforming them for English learners in those areas. Because we don't have SOL data for kindergarten through second grade, we use the PALS assessment that I spoke of earlier. This data is the percentage of students who have met the benchmark. In the fall of 2016 is the orange, and in the spring of 2017, which is the blue. So, you can see in kindergarten, we had about a 92% or so pass rate. In first grade, in the fall, it was 90%. It dipped a little bit to about 88% in the spring. And then, in second grade, you can see that we had a bit of an increase. Overall, as a system in K2, 90% of our students met the benchmark. So, again, the question is, what does this mean in terms of what our students need and how we address those needs? So, this shows the percentage of students. We have 10% of students who have been identified as needing additional support according to the PALS assessment. On the left, you see kindergarten, and when you look at, this is a pentagon, you see five different tasks that the students complete on the PALS assessment. So, at the top, you see rhyme awareness. On the right, you see beginning sound. The bottom right is alphabet, letter sounds, and spelling. The center of that pentagon is 0%. Each line going out is another 10%, okay? So, when we look at this and we're thinking about what do our students, that 10% of students who need additional support in early literacy, what is it that they need? So, if you look at alphabet, that line goes out to about 40%. So, about 40% of the students who need additional support in early literacy need support in the area of alphabet. About 40% need support with letter sounds, and this is our spring data. About 60%, because this is only a 0 to 60% scale, need support with spelling. And in spelling in kindergarten, we're talking about consonant-vowel consonant words like "cat." And then, about 48% or so need support with rhyme awareness and work there. And then about forty-eight percent or so need support with rhyme awareness and work there. So what we are able to do then is say, okay, if we know that in the spring of kindergarten, we have about fifty percent of that ten percent of our students who need additional support with rhyme awareness, our first-grade teachers can then support those students in phonemic awareness activities. And so we're able to look at the data and say, here are those specific needs of students. Very similarly, you see the same thing on the right for first and second grade. First is the blue, second is red. This does go to a hundred percent scale. So when you look at this one, what we pull out of that is, in first and second grade in the spring, our students have what they need in terms of alphabetics and phonemic awareness skills. What they need additional support in, if you look at the blue for first grade, almost a hundred percent of the kids who were not proficient need support in passage accuracy. What that means is that they need to, they need support in putting together their phonemic awareness, their phonics, and their fluency skills to successfully read a particular text. They also, when you look, about seventy percent or so of students need additional support with spelling. And this allows our teachers to really drill down and say, what areas of spelling do they really need support in? Is it that they need consonant-vowel consonant words? Is that they need help with long vowels, with digraphs and blends? Like, what really is it? And so as a system, we're not looking at the aggregate data at that level, but it allows our teachers to do that. And some of the questions that the board has asked before, where are those needs? So this shows the specific needs of the students that we are continuing to try to help to meet that benchmark. Okay? All right. So that is reading. Let's talk about math. This again is our SOL data. We, our percentage of students is eighty-six percent proficient compared to the state at seventy-nine percent. You see, we follow about that same rate of improvement as the state. We see again increases for our Black students as well as our English learners. And we do see a dip in math for our special education students. So again, we've started drilling into that data to see where the specific needs lie. We will continue with co-teaching, as was referenced earlier this evening, as well as provide some specific strategies for teachers. Even as early as next week, we have a math expert coming in to work with our teachers on specific strategies. Because what we found in our fifth-grade math data was that students need a lot of additional support with number sense. And number sense really speaks to flexibility of numbers, estimation, things like place value. We also found for our students with disabilities in seventh grade that they need support with computation and estimation. So we'll be going in to those students who are in eighth grade, right? Because now they've moved from seventh to eighth to provide that additional support. When we look at SOL data by English learner type for math, we see that similar stair step. So we had students who are E.L.P. Level One at sixty-two percent proficiency. And again, interestingly, there's a little bit of drop in Level Two, but then the stair step kicks in. And we're also very close in terms of proficiency for students who were English learners, who are proficient in English, as well as our non-Ls. Science, this is one of the ones I highlighted because we have a rate of improvement that is higher than the state. You can see the state dipped a little bit, and we continued to have an upward trajectory there. Again, our English learners, we see great gains in science from fifty-nine to sixty-three percent and work around our students with disabilities. So we did again dig into the data, and in fifth grade, will support the work of our students who need support with living systems as the area of science that we found for fifth grade to really dig into. Finally, for social studies, interestingly, we see we are above the state and have this flat line for both APS as well as the state of Virginia, maintaining at eighty-eight percent proficient across the board for social studies. We saw a dip last year for our English learners and are back at sixty-eight percent proficient, which is very close to where we were in twenty fifteen, and we hope to see that continue. So our next steps, we do want to celebrate our successes. We've already had principals out there celebrating with their staff in their schools and sharing a lot of the great work that has been done by our students as well as our teachers. And it's important to take that time. We have maintained high proficiency over the last several years, and we'll continue to do that. And it is worth celebrating. We will also do these three things. And I've talked a little bit about what these things look like through the presentation this evening. One is that we review our data at all levels, from the division to the individual student, to look at what are the specific needs. We have an expectation that our teachers in their collaborative learning teams are looking at the data, the information I showed from PALS, when we know that they have specific needs with spelling as well as with passage accuracy. We need to be analyzing that to say, these students are using their visual cueing systems. These students need support with syntax. These students need support with meaning. So we'll be digging into that with our teams and looking at what is the specific information for individual students. And then determine the specific instructional needs based on that analysis. So I've already talked some about the need to really work on number sense for some of our students, to look at life science in some of our grades. So really thinking about what are those needs? And then ensuring that the resources and professional learning opportunities align with those specific areas. So the reading intervention protocol that we're rolling out with the Arlington Tiered System of Support, looking at data with our CLTs and specific training in instructional strategies. So that is our update for this evening and the work that we are doing. And I believe we may have a speaker, so.
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Natress and Ms. Elliott. Do we have any speakers?
We do. We have one speaker, Ms. Smith.
Now it's your turn. Thank you for your patience, Ms. Smith.
My name is Valerie Smith, and I thank you all for clarifying for me my position addressing the board. The issue that I wish to bring forth, though, is your at-risk students. Not just that the at-risk students are my family members, but also as a concern for the community at large. My question that I have for the board has somewhat essentially been addressed at the system level. But the issue that my concern is at the student and the classroom level. Because that's where I was, I had to take my issue with the concern about my grandson who was having some problems with geometry. The first response that I got from the administrative staff, I didn't especially like it because the response that I got as a concerned parent member was that there was a defense barrier that was placed. And I didn't especially like that because the response, when I inquired about the mythologies that were used to teach the child, it was all about you're attacking the teacher, and it's like, it's not even about her. It's about him. He is the object of the educator, the student. Just like I'm a registered nurse, the object of my practice as a nurse is the patient's well-being. And so when I was inquiring, I was inquiring to have the issue addressed with, how can we do this together? Because I'm a parent member, I'm his grandmother, and I wanted to be able to help and support him at home. So I wanted to see what the teacher was teaching so that I could bring it home. Because that is, in essence, where the child gets a lot of the reinforcement at, is at the home level. And I didn't see that in your dialogue also, so that's another issue. But my question that I have specifically is, how can a student pass an SOL in geometry and fail the classroom instruction? It's very simple. You don't have to answer it tonight because I think it will help with some of your assessment that you have to do. And I do assessments as a nurse. That's what we do. And that's what I went to the school with, was that I want to assess what is going on here? What is it I can do to help, help mom and help my grandson? And so that's a question that I'd just like to raise with you. And at whatever point that you're able to address it, I think it'll help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Dr. Cannon, can I just interrupt for just a second?
Yes, please.
Because of this concern that was brought to us. Ms. Smith, I'm going to ask one of our staff members, if possible, before you leave this evening, to touch base with you. Ms. Cynthia Johnson works very closely with all our school principals. And perhaps the two of you can step out in the hall, and we'd like to follow up on that right now, this evening with you.
We, she might want to listen to the discussion first, maybe.
Well, absolutely. But before you leave, if you could make contact with Ms. Johnson, that would be great.
Got that. Good. Okay, board colleagues, questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Lander.
Good evening, Dr. Natress. Quick question for time's sake. As we look at the presentation, and you did such a tremendous job analyzing the information, drilling down to the student, how do we track trends to see if we have Black and Latino students and students with disabilities as we look to identify what their specific needs are? If those needs are trending within a certain group of students? Because I know we're trying to move away from identifying by race. How do we ensure that students of same backgrounds aren't all having a problem with the issue? Same issue?
We will continue to look at data in the various ways that I shared them tonight. So we'll still continue to look at reporting groups for those trends while trying to get much more specific like we did with the PALS data. So we'll use them in conjunction to make sure that we are addressing the needs of all of our kids.
Everyone?
Everyone.
In every school?
In every school.
Thank you.
Ms. Lander.
Dr. Natress, thank you so much for your presentation, and I really appreciate the detail that you delved into. I was excited to see that our English language learners, their improvements in a lot of their tests. But I did have a lot of concern with the fact that there was a decline for Hispanics in three out of the four subjects and a steady rate in one. And the one thing that I want to bring to light, Mr. Lander mentioned this, that I know we're looking at students as students, and that's our goal and vision for the future. And a lot of times, people who aren't as familiar with English language learner community or the demographics of our system assume that a lot of our English language learners are Hispanic. However, our English language learners grew in success, but our Hispanics did not. And so it brings to question, you know, a lot of the advocacy work that I've done in trying to bring awareness to the achievement gap and the Hispanic community, understanding the difference between our English language learner Hispanics and our Hispanics who are generation Hispanics who suffer very similar consequences to the African-American community. And in doing the math briefly, our achievement gap is still around twenty percent for Black and Hispanics that are not English language learners. And so I don't know what the solution is. And I know that we're doing everything we can to really address this. I just want to make us aware that we are starting finally to see that gap. So it means that our English language learner community is really, there's potential for them to really start thriving. And that was great to see that they're proficient, once they're proficient, we're almost up to par. It's wonderful news, but we still have to figure out how to address the achievement gap. And as, I just want to echo what Mr. Lander said. But it's so concerning to me that our Hispanics are declining. So as you break down that data, I would love to hear a follow-up on what you found, what support systems are in place? Is it cultural competency training? Is it low expectations? Is it economically disadvantaged? Are there cross? You know, when we look at the achievement gap, we need to break it down to such a granular level that we are actually looking at the kid to find out how many of these markers that society puts on us to define them is placed on one child. And how can we address those markers and make that child be a child who can actually gain the wonderful quality education that we at our own public school systems provide to our children without those markers? So I don't, I know you don't have answers, but whatever you can do to help me help you, I would be grateful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tullento. Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you very much. I got a few questions. But before I get started, I want to pick up on something that Ms. Tullento said. Maybe you both can help me with the answer. And that is, how did you understand from the data that the Hispanic students of English language learners were not, you know, their scores were different from what we saw in the aggregate English language learners?
I don't know that they are. But a lot of times, when I've been working with community members and different community advocacy groups, a lot of assumptions are that our Hispanic students are not doing well because they are English language learners. And the reality is, is that many Hispanic students are born in America and speak English and are proficient in English and are not English language learners. And a lot of times, people who are working with the achievement gap do not separate the groups. And they have different needs. And sometimes they have the same needs. And it would be interesting, actually, for me to see the English language learner breakdown to find out if our English language learners who are Hispanics are also suffering the consequences that our Hispanics are. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. And do we have that information? Do we have it teased out like that?
I don't have it offhand this evening, but we can pull it. So we'll pull it for you and share it so that you can see the overlap amongst some of those reporting groups. We can pull that.
So we can figure out Hispanic students versus the total English learners?
Yes, we can see Hispanic students who are also English learners and Hispanic students who are not English learners. So we can pull that data.
Okay, thanks. Can you go to slide four, please?
Sure.
Oh, yeah. So here, we met or exceeded twenty-eight of twenty-nine. What was the one that?
It is World History I, which is an end-of-grade assessment. So Ms. Hicks, our social studies supervisor, and I are digging into that one.
And is that, so that's World History I. So that's at the middle school level?
Typically, high school. At some middle school, some high school.
Okay. And is that across all student reporting groups?
It is. So that's the aggregate of World History I.
Okay. Thanks. How about slide seven, please? Okay, so first, on all of these slides that look like this, let me ask, is there statistical significance in, say, you know, that first one going from eighty-six to eighty-seven percent?
I actually had a conversation with some people about this today because we have not run statistical significance on the changes. As I said kind of earlier, when you look from the sixty-four to sixty-nine percent, my guess is that there is some in the English learner. But when you're talking about one or two percentage points, it's hard to say. So we haven't run that analysis. It's not typically an analysis that's done.
Are we going to find that out?
We can work through it.
I mean, are you saying that's not normally done? Because we wouldn't, if were, then we would know it for twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to know that, the statistical significance here. And, oh, so you had talked about, and I'm not sure exactly which slide, you had talked about three implementation strategies that you're going to use once we understand, review the data and understand.
That was with this one, yep.
And one was inclusion, and one was specific interventions?
Yes.
And the other was ATSS?
Correct.
Okay. And so these data came from the end of the last school year?
Correct.
Like, spring of twenty seventeen?
Yes.
So reviewing this data, when do you expect that you've looked at the data, you know enough about it to be able to apply these implementation strategies?
We've dug into some of the data with the examples that I've given you this evening, specifically around students with disabilities. We are continuing to look for patterns and trends across all of our individual students. And then we'll make some determinations about needs. I would say with the PALS data that we have for K-2 in particular, we can already use that to make instructional decisions. And we'll be doing that, starting as soon as school starts, and matching students to appropriate interventions. SOL data is a little bit different because it only breaks things down into strands as well as to specific standards. well as to specific standards for individual students, but there sometimes aren't really enough questions in a standard to make an instructional decision. So we rely more heavily on data like this, as well as PALS and reading inventory and things, to plan for what are those interventions.
So are there other measurement instruments for subjects like math and social studies and science like there is for literacy?
We use the math inventory for math, specifically in middle schools, and that provides information to teachers about specific student needs. We also use quarterly assessments for science and social studies that our teachers evaluate to determine student instructional needs.
Okay, so you said where we have the PALS data, we can get started right away with implementation strategies. And the others, where we don't have PALS data, but we have some of this other, some of these other instruments, when do you get started then?
We've shared this data. So for example, our students who were in elementary school moving to middle school, the middle schools have that data, so teachers can analyze it and start using it from the first day of school. So anything that's in-house data, teachers have readily accessible already. They also have the SOL data that they can look at from the year before. What we like to really analyze are things like, within geometry, are there specific areas in geometry that we need to maybe adjust in the curriculum because they were gaps? And our geometry teachers would start that work this year. Then we're looking at things like I spoke to earlier, and I can't remember which grade level example I gave, but knowing that those students are now eighth graders, how do we work with the eighth grade teachers to support students in the areas where they have a need? So that work starts as soon as school begins.
Okay, and are there budget implications for that?
No.
To establish or carry out those implementation strategies?
No.
Okay. Can you go to slide 10?
Dr. Murphy, can you slide to the right a smidge? Nope, I was going to pull mine.
So this is, these are, what do they call them, radar graphs or something like that? But they are talking about not the achievements, but the needs, right?
Correct.
So here, 40, almost 50% of the kindergarteners need?
Of the 10% of students who are not proficient in PALS. So it is about 50% of the 10%. Not 50% of APS students, 50% of 10%.
Ah, okay. Bet I must have missed that. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I'm glad you asked. I'm glad you asked that question.
When everything is perfect, we're going to see a, here a Pentagon radar graph that's got nothing in it.
Exactly, yes, yes. That's exactly correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And one more, slide 15. I guess I've already asked the question based on this one, about when are the implementation strategies getting started? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, sure. Great, thank you very much. Ms. Van Doran.
Hi, Dr. Natress, thank you very much. First, I want to thank you because in the past year, I have watched you work with your staff and with the outside groups who have been advocating particularly for students who still need to be hitting our benchmarks. And I know that you've really taken the time to visit all the schools and classrooms and listen to people here. So thank you very much. And this data is a reflection of where we are today. The frustration I have is I feel like I've seen this data for years and it's not a whole lot different than it's been. And I'd like to make sure that somehow you're able, that we are able, on behalf of the kid, all the kids, to move the needle on these, in these areas. And it would be easy to say, gee, we're doing great. You know, we've met all the benchmarks, but there are children who aren't individual children. And for me, the positive part of this is, and if, we're just looking at the graph on seven, because on slide seven, all the rest look pretty similar. And I know you can slice and dice, but if we just take that first graph, which is that 87% of APS students in a composite are not making, not where they need to be with their reading on the SOLs, correct? That's a composite reading.
The 87% on the left is looking at third through 12th graders as a composite in reading. Yes.
Right. And math is just, it's 88, it's 86% rather than 87%. So in the gross, in the aggregate, for us as a school board, it means that 13% of our kids are not meeting the benchmark that we want them to meet. And we really want that 13% to meet the benchmark. And that's our challenge. So we can applaud the fact that 87% of our kids are, and that's great. And they can obviously do better and we can challenge them more, but 13% of our kids are not. And when you look at that, that's 3,380 kids, which is actually a pretty small number. It's 3,380 kids across 33 schools, which, when you do that math, is about 100 kids per school. Now, that's going to be fewer for an elementary school, it's going to be more for a high school. But there are between 50 and 100 staff members, teachers, in each one of those schools. So that means that in an elementary school, just doing a gross analysis, that's two students of that 13% for each teacher in the school. And at high school, it's one. So that, to me, is exciting because it says to me, you have the manpower and person power and you have the talent and you have the resources. I presume the answer was, this is not about resources. This is about properly allocating resources to the specific needs of the specific child. And I would just really encourage us, now that you've gotten a lay of the land and have your organization in a way that you can focus, that we really listen to our teachers in the schools and to the individual needs of each of those children, because it actually probably isn't 3,380 students. It's probably, there's probably one child that's in three points on that graph because they have multiple issues or multiple reasons why we may need a different intervention. So to me, if we can see that this is not insurmountable, I think part of our issue is we sometimes go, well, that's really okay, we're doing okay, we're doing pretty darn well. But that's 3,000 max, 3,380 children. Individual children with individual names with teachers. And I just would really encourage us to start to think about it that way and own each one of those kids, because at $19,000 a child minimum, this shouldn't, we should be able to figure this out. And I think you're on the verge of doing that. So keep going. I hope we see that getting smaller next year, but please keep going because in the past, what I've seen is these broad brushes that don't really focus on the individual child. If the child is an English language learner, recent immigrant with a disability, that's a different remedy than a child who is simply with a disability from a different background. There are different remedies that we use. So please, it's individual child. And we can get down to that granular level and we should, and I know that you will. So I'm trying to stay really positive and be a cheerleader. But I think part of it is knowing that we all work with our individual schools. Our teachers are a gold line of information about what they need and what they want to do. And they need to be able to be accountable for the kids. You know, I was also just adding up the number of support people you have. A gifted teacher, a reading teacher, a math teacher, a Title I teacher, a special education teacher at a minimum, an Esol Hill teacher. If there are 10 in each school, it's only 10 kids per each one of them in addition to the teacher. So we have the resources. We just really, really, somebody has to own each one of those kids and give them everything they need. So please, whatever we need to do to help you do that, let's do it. But it really is a finite number and very specific needs. Thanks.
So, yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Natress. Terrific presentation, lots of detail. We're spending a lot of time on this topic because frankly, this, I think, is probably the most important topic we're talking about all year. You know, we're headed into a new school year, we have the chance to do better, and there's a lot of stuff, I think, that board members are digging into that are really important and we want to make sure we're capturing everything. So I have a couple of little things that are follow-ups on things other people said. And I want to also talk about SOLs in general, and I do also want to talk about school-based and students and potentially failing courses. So let me start with a couple of basics, though. Mr. Goldstein had asked about the one slide where it was only 10% of the student population?
Yes.
Simple solution, we need titles that explain who the, you know this, but there are a few situations, we need to know who this is, this is covering. In a similar way, statistical significance was asked about, is there any reason we don't provide sample sizes? I know that, you know, because I'll do that, I sort of sometimes try to do back-of-the-envelope things and I'll say, okay, reading test, you know, third through, like you said, third through 12, how many students is that? And then sometimes if we're subdividing into specific groups, I'll think, oh, this many students are in this category. Can we just provide the N? And that way, we can really, you know, we can see whether these things are statistically significant or not. The other thing we can see, yes. So can we do that?
And we do that when we do the school-level reports that we post. That has the N size for each of the groups. We can add them to this as we do this presentation.
And I know it can get complex with a lot of information, but it's, we really kind of need to know how many students are being looked at in these different categories because they're not, in some sense, the same. But having said that, I got to be honest, I think probably there are very few statistically significant results in this thing. And in that sense, you know, you spent way more time than you needed to going through the details of whether things went up or down because they were flat. Everything to me, in this slide as an example, is flat. Now, in some cases, that's fine because there's really high scores in there, but in other cases, not. And I think what we need to discuss as a board is, I already know, we're not comfortable with some of those results and remaining flat, but, you know, what do we do about it and what's the next step? So that's just sort of a fact. A couple of thoughts about this, though. So first of all, have you seen, do you see the SOL tests?
The tests itself?
The actual tests?
No, I do not.
Right, you do not. Teachers don't. So we spend how much time looking at, you know, results? And the fact is, not a single one of us in this room, watching on video or anywhere else, actually knows what these students have been tested on. And you have, the teachers say they're not, like, they're not supposed to, they're not supposed, this is like, I don't know if it's, it's the practice ones?
There are release items, so there are release items from previous tests.
Yeah, so there are examples and things like that. But when they come out, so like, you know, the last test that all these kids took in the spring, you don't even know.
Correct.
When we say, you know, half, some of them didn't pass, we don't know what they didn't answer correctly, we don't know what the question was. And when we hear teachers talk about what they know the questions are like, sometimes they're like, remember, these are for-profit testing companies. These are complex questions, you know, purposely designed to, you know, cause students to struggle. And there can be cultural issues, there can be all sorts of issues with testing. So I guess my point is, is this really how we want to be asking ourselves how we're doing? You talked about all sorts of things that we're doing in the classroom to see where kids are and what they're up to. And like, teachers, especially in elementary school, when they have those kids all day, know if those kids are doing, you know, better than the day before and if they're learning and if they're growing. And, you know, I don't know what the solution is because this has been our industry standard and state law, but the fact is, we're really all looking at data that we don't know, you know, the real, true meaning of. We haven't seen what has produced this data. Kind of a mystery there. Final point, I wanted to get to the speaker's question about students who aren't doing well in school. And I know, I have been told that we have regular points. Mr. Adsumile has a fantastic system for principals and administrators to like, be able to dig in and find out who's not doing well at any point in time. I'm especially worried about middle school and high school because I think elementary school teachers know their students and they're able to keep track if someone's not doing very well. But middle school and high school, you've got different teachers all day long, you've got some kids who, early in the year, are already, their grades are going south. Are we, in every school, middle school and high school, following up with these kids and their families and offering to help? I got to be honest, I think that we say we are, but I'm not sure we are. And that would be a huge improvement this year if we committed to saying, a month into school, we're going to find out who's not doing well, we're going to, you know, pull them in, we're going to talk to their families and we're going to, we're going to figure out how we can help, how we can work with families to help.
And that is the expectation. So if it's not happening, we will help make sure that it is.
And I know we're going to have a conversation in the hall to find out one example of how we can, how we can do that better, but I really hope we can commit to doing that. Ms. Tlento.
There is one question I forgot to ask, and it's a simple question. But before that, I want to respectfully disagree with my colleague, Dr. Cannon, in on the testing data. While I realize there may not be significance in perhaps a drop or low, when you're looking at a 20% gap between our white students and our black and Hispanic students, that is significant. And black and Hispanic students are born and raised in this country with the same, they may be bicultural and there may be cultural differences. And I understand that we should not be teaching to a test. And so I don't, and I know for a fact that there has been research done that tests are geared more to certain types of students. But if this is the measure we're using, then this is what we need to meet. And so I just want to make note of that, that there's a few different perspectives and I think there's wisdom and knowledge and basis for all, but I do have strong feelings about that because this is a gap that I've been fighting to close for a very long time, I feel. The question that I wanted to ask is, can English language learners in WEDA levels one through four take advanced courses?
Yes, they can take advanced.
They are able to take advanced courses. Do we have data on their, because I think it was one of your first slides, I don't have the page number.
Yeah, and that was levels five and six.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not up there any longer, but that was, we can pull it and see what those numbers are. We most likely will not have many Level One and Two students in because they are still very much acquiring English. We can look to see levels three and four, where that falls.
Okay.
If we can pull it.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be clear, Ms. Tlento, maybe I misspoke, I was talking about the time trend of the different curves, that when we say they've gone up by 1% or down, but those are not statistically significant changes. The differences in different groups are absolutely, I don't think we even need the N's for that one. They're surely statistically significant.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you very much, Dr. Natress.
You're welcome.
We are going to move on to our next item, which is an update on policies review. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to turn to Ms. Julia Burgos, our chief of staff, and she's going to bring the board and the community kind of an update on our policy review process. This is something we began to embark on last year, so we're going to hear a little bit about the different ways that policies are addressed here. We're going to also map the plan for the coming year. And then I believe Ms. Burgos is going to highlight some of the more prominent policies that we are going to be addressing in the coming year. So, Ms. Burgos, I'll turn to you.
Thank you. So good evening and thank you for allowing me to give this policy update. And I think Dr. Murphy kind of gave a little bit of a snapshot of what I'm going to cover, but mainly I'm going to talk about some of, the number of school policies that we have and our process for policy review and changes, which you're very familiar with, of course. And then, and lastly, I want to talk about our plans for 2017 and 18 and some of the things that we're looking to do so that we can continue to update our policies and move forward and really have a plan for the future. So first, right now, we had 189 policies, but we just added the threat assessment policy and then the policy that you hopefully will be acting on this evening with the electronic participation in meetings will bring us up to 191 policies. And I've reflected that in this chart for each of the areas that you're all familiar with. So I just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on how many policies we currently have and, which is actually not, and looking at some of the other jurisdictions, it's not an exorbitant amount of policies. So the next thing I want to talk about is what prompts a policy change? So there are three things. A legislative action or changing code, new state or federal regulation, the five-year update, which is the code, according to the Code of Virginia, and then, of course, the school board or staff recognizes a need. So the recent boundary policy is an example of that, the need for changing the boundaries based on capacity or enrollment needs. So that's, of course, one of the most recent ones that we worked on. So the first thing I want to touch on is our process for compliance with legislative assembly updates. assembly updates. And so in January, we enlist the help of our legislative liaison who attends the general assembly sessions and gives, keeps us up to, up to speed every week on what are some of the session, what are some of the policies or changes that may be coming down the pike that affect education as a whole. And so we are pretty much keeping track along, throughout the winter of what policies may be coming down the pike and what we may be needing to look at. And then when we receive a final report from the legislative liaison in the spring, that's when we, that kind of prompts us into action. We see what the final report is in terms of what actions were taken, as well as some of the things that were vetoed. So many of those actions, the requirements are that they be put into place by July 1st, so we have that timeframe to begin work. And so one of the things, an example of that, is the annual changes that we do to the purchasing resolution, which are, the state notifies us of the changes, we get into action, have them ready for the July 1st meeting, and so that begins, begins the whole cycle with the purchasing resolution, which, of course, you're all very familiar with. And then, of course, in July, we receive a superintendent's memo that outlines all of the policy changes. And this chart that I have here, which, of course, you've received, but I wanted to just put a graphic up here, we use this as sort of a final look, a final reference, did we miss anything? Is there something that we didn't do? And most, I mean, I haven't known of a time that we have missed something, but it's a final check to make sure that we're in compliance with all the regulations that have come down the pike. And this is something that we put together and the ELT reviews it, but it's something that we've been looking at over time when we receive that final report from the spring. And then, of course, the next action that we look at is, the school board policies need to be reviewed every five years and they're revised, or they're revised as needed. So that's according to the Code of Virginia, so that's another way that we change our policies. And that's something that we've embarked on over the past couple of years, which has led us to change a quite a number of policies, which you'll see on this next chart, which if, we, we've shared this in the past, but this is a much more updated version of the list that we've shared with you. In some cases, we've even updated the policies twice over the last year because we've noticed another need that has come down. So we've definitely done a lot of work. And right now, the executive leadership team is working together to look at dates and prioritize some of the policies that we're going to be working on for next year. So we've been sort of working as a team to figure out what's next and what's going to be prioritized for the beginning of the year and then, and then, of course, later on in the year. And you'll also see on here, too, the two policies that were created recently. We also have a couple of policies that are in progress that are expected for action at the September 7th school board meeting, to our HR policies with contracts and work schedules, and the other one is on telecommuting, and then naming of facilities. So this, I'm just going to put all of them up here. This is sort of our process for policy review that we have currently in place. So initially, the department completes an initial draft and brings it to the executive leadership team where we review and make suggestions for any edits. And then that's when it goes to the community stakeholder process. Each department has a, which I'll show you in the next chart, which you've seen before as well, is who are the groups that we work with to make sure that we're meeting all the needs of each of the communities. So that's the next phase of the process. And then once we've completed that whole phase, the superintendent shares it with the school board. And that's what prompts the action for the school board to bring it forth either to an info item or work session and then move to the rest of the process. So this is our current process in place. And this is the chart that I was just talking about, is each of the content areas consults with each of these groups when I'm looking at policies to make sure that we've considered all the needs of those particular areas and that we have that community engagement process and input when, when instituting new policies. So our plans for 2017-18 is we're looking to establish a new intern, like, an internal stakeholder policy review team, and I'll talk a little bit about the structure of that. We also want to look at proposing a new numbering system. Right now, the numbering system that we have is not consistent across the policies. We've continued to find it difficult to kind of insert new policies when we have new ones to include. Also, to develop formal guidelines for policy formatting, which I know that the school board clerk has definitely brought to our attention, so we've been talking to her about that. And then, of course, continue our efforts to update policies monthly and to present to the board for review and adoption. And so that's the work that I was talking about earlier, that we're looking at all of policies and how we can prioritize them. And one thing I do want to note is that this policy review team is actually like an add to the process, which I'll show in, in a bit. It's really, I think, we, we feel a really important part of the process to make sure that we're moving forward and that we have a, a way of keeping up to date on an annual basis, all of our policies. And also, we have some research underway about, on looking at different numbering systems and guidelines that can help us to move forward. Last year, we updated about 50 policies and we could, we are hoping to continue that pace, if not more. So for the policy review team, the structure would be that we, it would be comprised of one representative from each department so that we make sure that all the voices are heard and also that it would include the work of, the help of the school board clerk to make sure that we are on, on task. And also, it moves us away from the ownership of, of a policy and, from an individual to a cross-representative group so that we are ensuring that there's no overlap of content and that we're cross-referencing other policies. Many of our policies name other parts and other policies, and we want to make sure that that is consistent and that we're making, that we're including, we're inclusive in the process. So the charge of the group would be to determine priorities for the 2017-18 year and beyond and to map a calendar for completion so that we, so that it's not cumbersome and any one given month that we can do it in a very methodical way. And like I said before, reviewing the over, reviewing for overlapping content and cross-referencing with other policies. So these are some of the, just overarching things that the group will be doing. And we're hoping to start this group in September of this year and moving on and working throughout the year. So as I mentioned before, I'm going to show you how this puts a step into our process. So once the ELT members review the policy and make suggestions, then it will move on to the policy review team. This ensures that our policies are solid before they move on to the community process because what we're finding is that they go to the community process and then we come back and then there's a big exchange process because some things may have not. But we want to make sure that, as a time it gets to the community process, that it is really a solid policy, that we won't have a lot of changes and we can hopefully move through the process a lot quicker. It also ensures that the, that each department has considered any of the needs for each of the policies, either things that are for, for the future or things that need to be deleted or things that are no longer relevant based on some of the changes. So it really helps us to, to have a much more cohesive and inclusive process within the, within the team. And then, of course, from there, the, the process continues. So it's not a replacement of anything, it's actually an addition. So those are some of the things that we're working on to update the policies, and I'll take any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. And first I'll ask if Ms. Elliott, do we have any speakers? No speakers? Okay. Board colleagues, comments, questions? Ms. Talento.
Who will be making up the policy review team for the new step in the process?
It'll be a representative from each of the departments as well as a school board clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lander, question? Comment?
Sure. Good evening, Ms. Burgos. I had a question about the policies and how they relate to departments. Where is the cross-reference done as far as, say, technology? And we're looking at one-to-one devices. So what policies do we have currently in place, do they need to be changed, or is there duplication in those policies from instruction to information services? Who, how does that get done?
That's, that's exactly the work that we want to do with the committee so that, with the team, so that each of those areas are being considered. So for instance, in looking specifically at the technology policies, like I said, we've been all, all working together and looking at how we're going to kind of tackle this. And for the technology policies, there are some that are being reviewed and updated, but then there's a talk about maybe adding some. So that would be like a suite of policies. But then the team would look at it as a suite, making sure that all, that we're talking to instruction, that we're talking to, to school and community relations, if it has to do with the websites. All of the pieces that go into that, everyone would be involved in looking at that policy from every standpoint so that when we're presenting them to the school board for consideration, that they, all that work has already been done and all that cross-referencing and all the, the work that needs to be done across departments has already been completed.
So just for clarification purposes, when you say everyone, will there be a policy person within each department? Or is it a rotating assignment from, depending on the subject matter?
No, it'll be a policy person that's assigned from the department.
From each?
From each of, each of the departments.
And then they will collaborate. You talked about the number of policies that we have and that we're adding. How many policies have we gotten rid of?
Uh, I don't believe, from what, from what I can remember, I don't think we've gotten rid of many. But that is some of the work that we're going to look at, is what's still relevant. And I know that Dr. Natress and I were looking at a couple of policies and we were wondering if some of these need to be.
As, as part of the process, it would be helpful to the board as we look and consider new, bringing new stuff on. If maybe, before I leave, at the December meeting, we can have an update on policy-wise where we are as far as identifying duplicates and overlap and how we could sort of reduce the number of policies. Because I think we've, you know, we're growing as a school system, we're growing as, in both our population and our facilities and the type of instructional tools we're using, AKA, technology. So there may be some policies that are just outdated and some that are duplicate that it would be helpful that the board would be able to get, get an update on that at some point. Not right away, but, you know, after having reviewed some of it. So thank you.
Absolutely. I think that's one of the things that we're, we're going to be looking to do with the policy review team and bring those forth to the school board once we've kind of identified the ones that are kind of old or need to be changed and things like that.
That's great. Ms. Van Dorn.
Okay, thank you very much. I think it's very important that we do this, and my concern is that there are some difficult policies and we tend to, sometimes, I found last year, they got stuck in the internal process. So there was, there were a couple of times last year when we brought something forward in a very imperfect state to get it moving, and we then got it through the system very quickly. So I'm concerned about the degree to which this is internal before it gets to the board and to an external audience. So I'm wondering if, back at the beginning, when we decide, say now, which policies we're taking on this year, that we say what they are and we list them publicly and hold ourselves to that. And if we slip, we slip, but then the board members can be aware of what we're looking at as well. And policies, I can think of several, actually, that have slipped for a couple of years, and I'd like to see that not happen anymore because I think they just simply were staff time, the, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to guess why, I just know that they did and ones that we needed to address. So I'm just suggesting that we, on the tab, on the engage us tab, there's a place now for the options and transfer policy. I would suggest maybe that just be policy revisions, list them, and if people want to comment on them, that's fine, but then no one's ever surprised that this is what we're going to take on this year. We can know which ones we should be paying attention to. Maybe we want to lobby some information early so that we can hasten this process. Because I've found between department completes initial review and the superintendent shares with the school board, that sometimes takes too long.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we need to have a standard for that. If it takes too long, what is it that's in the way of bringing this forward? And what issue is it that we may need to shake free so that you can move it forward? Okay, so I guess I'd like to know, what are we going to take on this year? What's the timeframe? Knowing that we may slip, but I want to know now where our problem might be so that we can give it a shove.
Those are some good suggestions, and I think that the, the review team will be really helpful with that because we have, we map out that, that calendar and we can really try to stick to it as much as possible, depending.
That would be great, but I also know that that ad hoc group is where some things got stuck last year. And there are going to be times when the board is going to need to give some things a shove. Because, just because people can't agree in that group doesn't mean it just languishes there. We have to give it a shove. So let's hold ourselves accountable, let's see what we're going to look at, let's give our, give ourselves a timeframe, and let's push ourselves to finish us, to finish them. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Goldstein.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think Nancy covered this question of mine, I just want to double check. Will you be giving us a list of the policies that will be updated or considered for updating this school year, 17-18 school year?
Yes, that's what we want to, that's one of the first things that we'll look at as, as the policy review team, is what, what we're focusing on. And actually, the departments currently are giving suggestions about that themselves, what, what, so that they can, we can give it to the review team. So they're, they're kind of the first line of giving us an idea of what policies they would like to work on this year, and then we'll look at it as a team and then we'll determine the final calendar.
Okay, and roughly, what's the timeframe going to be that, when we would see this? Just, I won't hold you to it, just in a month?
You will.
Two months?
I'm sorry.
Something I can put in my tickler file.
I would imagine the end of September, beginning of October, we should have that pulled together.
Okay, thank you. Ian, can you go to slide seven, please?
Sure.
And the last bullet, naming of facilities, is that related to the one that we spoke about earlier? The, the?
We're going to talk about that, that's on the agenda, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, it's on, it's in an information item.
I think Dr. Murphy's going to address it a little later.
Okay, because, okay. Oh, yeah, right, because it says expected action and.
That was before the events and things, yeah.
Okay, so I mean, we're just, we're going to go through a regular information.
Right, right.
And then an action step.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's the part that confused me.
Sorry, I just realized that when you were talking about it, that that was prior to the.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I think my colleagues are kind of on the same wavelength that I was. I, so just, just to back up for a minute, we do have two or three big policy processes that we're expecting this year, the one-to-one technology, use, personal devices, inclusion, and then we're talking about the option and transfer policy still. So I think those are the three, you know, big ones. And I agree with my colleagues, seeing a list of what we're planning to do. We, at one point, I think during a work session, talked about how there are super easy revisions where really all that's happened is we have to update state code or, yeah, grammar, things like that, medium ones and hard ones. Hard ones being these big ones I just mentioned. So it, it would be helpful to see that. And I was trying to think, is this now, are we headed into the second or third school year of, with our kind of initiative of really trying to do this? Second only. And you mentioned in the PowerPoint that state law says we're supposed to update our policies every five years. And of course, when any of us go back and look at some of our policies, we see very old dates. So I think what I would like to see, and again, not asking for it tomorrow, but we need to know that we're getting to a five-year plan so that every one of these things ultimately gets hit, you know, as, as we catch up, you know, we've got a five-year plan to hit every single one of these policies again. And I recognize, I think, the numbering stuff and the combining and potentially finding things obsolete, all that stuff is fantastic, but we ultimately need to get to that point of having a five-year plan. So maybe that's just a comment for now, but, because you're still in that catching up phase, but if you have any thoughts on that.
Sure, actually, we completely agree, and I think that that's why we wanted to put this dedicated review team on, in place, so that it's not just an ad hoc group that just, one year fixes, we, we will keep them, keep it going so that they become very familiar with the policies and they're dedicated to that and that we can ensure that this process is, is moving forward smoothly for the years to come, that it's not just for now.
Yes, and, and so we'll, we'll keep in touch on that and look forward to it. Just one last thing I wanted to mention, we also need to update our own school board policies, which are the 10 items in the book. And I believe, I know Ms. Van Dorn and Ms. Talento have been interested in that, there's a policy in that section that was, that's dated 1999. So that, that, that was last century, so.
Well, I have, I have good news on that front.
But so?
I said I have good news on that front.
Oh, okay.
So, we actually are expected to get the revisions for the ten policies very shortly, and then we'll be able to give them to you for review.
Okay, that's, we'll discuss that.
Drafts, of course.
Yeah.
Drafts.
We'll put that in a weekly meeting and discuss.
Initial drafts, but something, it's already very close to being ready for you to review, is what I'm saying.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah, we're eager to see the list, see what you have on that. And I think, moving on to the next section, okay. Thank you very much. We are now at, ready for our action items. So, we wanna thank our audience for their patience in staying with us. First, we will act on the new school board policy, ten dash four point two, electronic participation in meetings by individual members. There have been no changes to this item since it was, since it was last presented for information, and may I have a motion to approve the policy?
I move that the board adopt school board policy ten dash four point two, electronic participation in meetings by individual board members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Elliott, do we have speakers? Okay, then we shall vote. All in favor? Oh, discussion, sorry. Any discussion?
I just wanna point out and make sure everybody understands that this allows board members the opportunity to call in to meetings or work sessions only twice per person in a calendar year, correct? Okay, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that it's not gonna be that, you know, I'll be sitting at home watching this on TV and, you know, calling in all the time, twice in a calendar year.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Our next item is the purchase of property on North Culpeper Street. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, are there any updates on this, Mr. Chadwick, that you would like to provide for us? Okay. I know there's been a number of questions by board members and community members, so I believe, Mr. Chadwick, you're gonna cover some of that information.
I am. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
As Dr. Murphy mentioned, there have been a number of questions and a more, as you know, a more extensive response to the questions has gone out, so I've summarized some of the important ones here for people who are watching. APS does prefer that all school properties have vehicular access from at least two different streets for use in emergencies. And of course, we recognize that this isn't going to be possible everywhere, given our densely developed urban county. Currently, fifteen out of thirty-six APS school facilities have vehicular access from only one street. Some of them have more than one access to a street, some of them have an in and out, and so, what we've actually said is, we're using the consideration as around access to a street and from a street. Glebe is the only APS school with sole vehicular access through an adjacent property that is not owned by APS or by Arlington County Government. I think you, I believe you're familiar with the map of the Glebe property, so the main entrance to the school, or the current entrance to the school, is through, via an easement through the Capital Life Church property from Glebe Road. We are proposing the purchase of the property outlined in sort of blue, seventeen twenty-one North Culpeper Street, to create a emergency access for emergency vehicles only, and also to create a pedestrian access which will be a little more open than the present pedestrian access from the back of the property, which goes between two tall fences that have a lot of overgrowth on either side of them. Leslie, you wanted to talk about the numbers?
We have agreed with the seller on a purchase price of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The Arlington County Real Estate Bureau assisted us throughout this process, and the proposed purchase is consistent with policy and Virginia Code.
How would we use the property? It would be dedicated access for emergency vehicles only, and it would add, as I just mentioned, a second, more open pedestrian route to the school from adjacent neighborhoods in the rear of the school. The spaces, the space would be landscaped, all of the existing, or we anticipate that all of the existing trees that are at least healthy will be maintained and additional shrubs and so on will be planted. There would be a curb cut made and approximately eighteen-foot-wide grass-paved driveway created through the property up to the current property line. Grass pave is a type of pave, a paving that grass grows through and after the grass has grown, sometimes it disappears altogether, but it provides a solid surface for vehicles to be staged on when necessary. There would be no through driveway, so there would be no impact on existing Glebe soccer or sports fields. The new pathway would, of course, connect with the existing pathway, but it would have no impact on the use of the fields. How would this APS use of the property affect the neighbors? So, as the property would be used only for emergency vehicles, no additional traffic is expected on Culpeper Street. A more pedestrian route to the school and fields would be created, and a fairly poorly-maintained property would be demolished and the site would be improved. Now, anything we do is subject to a county use permit, and we would need an amendment to the existing use permit for the Glebe property or for the Glebe School in order to incorporate this into the site of the Glebe School. Use permit conditions are really very stringent and are often, and certainly would be in a case like this, subject to the preferences of neighbors. And so, we also are fully aware, having worked in other locations, that the county would not allow this to be used. County transportation staff would not allow this to be used for regular vehicular access. And we would expect that to be made a condition of the use permit, and we would expect the neighbors to be asking that that be included and the county to staff and board to respect that. So, it would be used, it would also, could also prevent the site from being used from relocatable classrooms and other structures, which we actually wouldn't want to put on there anyway because they would be too far from the school. So, going through the use permit process actually allows conditions to be created to satisfy concerns of neighbors about how the property would be used. School board approval of the purchase is required in accordance with policy fifty dash four and policy implementation procedure fifty dash four point one. And the superintendent's recommendation is to approve the purchase of the property and authorize himself or me to sign related documents in connection with closing on the property. And, Leslie, you want to talk about funding?
The purchase cost, as well as any additional closing costs and the site improvements that we've discussed earlier, which we don't expect to exceed fifty thousand dollars, for a total of five hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, excuse me, we recommend come from the capital reserve.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Elliott, do we have speakers?
We do, we have three speakers on this item. And the first speaker is Alexandra Boshin.
Hello. I'm Alexandra Boshin, and I'm the president of John M. Langston Citizens Association. Thank you. So, I did send a email and a correspondence to the board, and I do appreciate there was feedback on that correspondence, we got it a couple of days ago. I think in my email, in the body of the email, I also stipulated that I do, I truly felt that the board should, this agreement was signed, I believe the bill of sale or agreement of sale was done July eleventh, twenty-seventeenth, with a sunset of August twenty-first, twenty-seventeen. The first notice or level of communication that people received was on July twenty-seventh, and I feel that people didn't have enough time to be engaged or participate. I felt that the process did not provide enough transparency. I felt that our community was not, you know, this was not a cohesive, inclusive process. And I think in my correspondence, I sort of hinted towards that and I felt that it was done while people were on vacation and it, you know, I think that this decision should be deferred. I understand the board does have a sunset by Monday, and so, that's kind of concerning because I felt like, you know, in some ways, our community, does our opinion matter? Are we being, you know, is John, 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 whatever, Community Center only being placated? Like, we are stakeholders, we are neighbors. When things happen, whether we agree or disagree with the final decision, we should've been engaged. And I think that was a bit of a failure on the school board's end. Also, I also, as a taxpayer, look at this about need versus want. You know, our, you know, this was a property that was foreclosed, that the bank had a hard time selling, that the last buyer bought it for four hundred thousand, you're paying five hundred and twenty-five thousand of taxpayer money, that, you know, we're saying that we need enough seats for students and kids. And I understand we prefer to have this, but is it a need? Is it a need that needs to be done today with money that we should be allocating towards, using our resources properly towards, I don't know, more seats, more teachers, more whatever? I don't know, I just feel like it was a rush job done behind people's back. And whether good or bad, communication didn't happen. And for me, yes, I would prefer it to defer, I understand it won't, but it leaves the community a bad taste. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Dorsey.
Hi, Dr. Murphy and the rest of the school board. I'm here representing Wecroft Woodlong Civic Association in partnership with the John M. Langston Civic Association. We, our civic associations are always interested in safety for all who live and work in our boundaries, including Glebe Elementary School. Your recent proposal to purchase, which actually, just less than an hour ago, we saw that there was also a purchase agreement signed on July eleventh to be implemented on July, no, August, I'm sorry, July eleventh, and then implemented on August twenty-first, came as kind of a shock to us when we spent a great deal of time after learning about the proposed purchase of the seventeen twenty-one North Culpeper Street, and we went out and polled our executive boards because we didn't have time to poll our civic associations, put together a list of questions, which John Chadwick, thank you, had them on the big board behind Dr. Murphy. We still have questions, and the process of, or standard operating procedure for including impacted neighborhoods really hasn't been applied in this, in this project. And that's what we really would love to see become a standard operating procedure for the school board. The response that we received was received two days ago. We have subsequently sent it out to our civic associations. We had no time to get input from residents, we only had time to poll our boards so we could speak to specific issues here tonight. But that being said, it sounds like we have a done deal, and the only thing we can talk to are policies and perhaps some changes. So, I'd love to see a policy to include impacted neighborhoods in any kind of decision that could create issues for the adjoining neighbors. Alexandra and I, our neighborhoods are adjacent, they're adjacent, seventeen twenty-one is an Alexandra Civic Association, Glebe School is in mine. We, we've gotten responses that there shouldn't be impact to traffic and pedestrian safety, and quite honestly, I've never seen a project in Arlington where somebody said that, oh, there will be no traffic impact, and we've had traffic expand. Sixty-six is something that is near and dear to my heart, not a school board issue, but certainly an issue for residents. Thank you for your consideration, I think we need to work on policy. Thank you.
Third speaker is Keisha Gravely.
Hello, good evening, school board members, actually, it's Gravely.
Gravely, sorry.
Number one, I'm kind of dismayed, learning that we are now speaking on this issue while the, what is a proverbial saying, the cart has been placed before the horse or what have you? Quite dismayed about that. Number one, Culpeper Street is quite narrow. If any of you have driven up and down Culpeper Street, it is quite, quite a narrow street. It is a family neighborhood where you have children riding bikes, neighbors out walking, things of that nature. Number two, when did the school board prefer this action? And when I ask that question, I mean, has this plan to have more than one entrance been factored into schools that have already been remodeled or under the process of being remodeled? Tuckahoe Elementary has one entrance, I believe Nottingham has one entrance, I believe Ashland has one entrance. Couple of those schools have been remodeled, was this factored in to those remodels? That's one question. Number two, have there been any instances where vehicles have been hindered by just one entrance to the school? That's another question. Secondly, this is kind of skirting off the issue, but I think if the county board would be bold and brash and think outside of the box, and I say that to say, if Arlington County School Board as well as Arlington County Board would utilize the empty office space that is sitting vacant in the school, in the county, and utilize those to be schools, you would have more than one entrance that you're seeking or that you prefer as a county board. I believe that the resources of the county are not being utilized properly to benefit the students, the teachers, and the parents here. I would, I would really implore the school board to reconsider this action before the twenty-first because the lack of communication, the lack of transparency that I'm sure you all would like in your daily lives or whenever you're dealing with businesses or individuals, you would appreciate, we as a community that are directly affected, would appreciate that same communication and that same transparency. So, going forth, I would like to think that the county board would implement other schools having two entrances instead of starting in Glebe, in the Glebe District, which will hinder the two communities that have been echoed by the presidents here. Thank you for your time.
Okay. No more speakers, correct? So, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Arlington School Board approve the purchase of seventeen twenty-one North Culpeper Street and authorize the superintendent or assistant superintendent, facilities and operations to sign related documents in connection with closing on the purchase.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's time for discussion. Anyone have comments, questions for Dr. Murphy or staff? No? Okay, Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you. Yes, so, also troubled by the, the lack of notification and transparency. So, Dr. Murphy, can you talk to us about the kind of standard operating procedure for notifying communities, you know, when there's something like this afoot?
You know, Mr. Goldstein, I wish we could roll the tape back, so I wanna apologize to the community directly. I think what our awareness is, when we see properties that become available because of the scarcity in the community, we act on those. We are constantly looking for property and have an awareness with a broker out there when such properties become available, whether they be individual small properties such as this or any types of properties in the community. So, we are actively doing that, recognizing that we're a growing school division and we need to be able to address that. We were pleased to see the fact that this piece of property came available, given the situation at Glebe, and we then moved forward. I think one of the other things is, we saw this really as an asset to the community, given the current state of the property. But in hindsight, and again, wishing we can roll the tape back, we will make sure that as we move forward, we will take appropriate steps. We are, though, also recognizing there are timelines to these things, so, and how we act and making sure that we act and involve the community in the future, we'll have to recognize as a part of the parameter, the, you know, what we're operating within.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chadwick, can you, can we go to slide five? I had a question on that. Oh, wow, that's good. How'd you do that? The last bullet there, no through driveway. Oh, actually, do you have a schematic of what the site would look like following...
We don't.
...purchase? And the plan is to demolish the property that's there now?
Of course.
Right? So, could you just kind of verbally walk us through what it's going to look like, you know, after that's done, after the site works done?
So, there will be a curb cut, probably somewhere close to where the curb cut is now. It will be located so that it goes straight through to an opening between trees, so that we don't have to remove existing trees on the property line. So, that's why I can't tell you exactly where it would be. And then it will, the pavement will be rebuilt at the curb cut. And then there will be a grass pave, as I described earlier, a driveway, 18 feet wide, the grass will go through it over time, and it will extend from the back of the sidewalk, or back of the curb cut, all the way up to the existing property line. That property is not very deep, it's broader than it's deep.
Approximately, how broad is it?
I don't have the dimensions.
But you're gonna make a...
It's over 50 feet, and then it's not that deep, so I can get you those dimensions.
Okay, so, you're gonna make an 18-foot driveway, so maybe a third of the property?
Oh, no, it's going to be less than a third.
Okay. But after the grass grows through the grass pave, then you walk by and basically what you see is just...
And there will be a gateway that prevents access of vehicles to that, only for emergency vehicles, and it will be kept locked.
Gate on the street side?
Yes, the back of the sidewalk.
On the curb cut side?
On the APS, what would be APS property at the back of the sidewalk.
And what about on the property line with the Glebe School?
We're not anticipating putting a fence on that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But that is something that's negotiable. If the neighbors would prefer a fence there, then we could certainly erect a fence.
Okay, and so this last bullet, where it says there would be no through driveway, what do you mean by a through driveway?
So, I think the residents were concerned that the drive that we're making there would connect with a driveway, with a paved road of some sort, to the parking lot, an entrance drive on the Glebe Road side of the school. We are not proposing that.
So, you cannot drive through from Glebe Road to Culpeper Street?
You can drive across the cross in an emergency, but regular vehicles would not be permitted to do that.
Okay, thank you. So, my last question or comment is really for the two folks from the civic association. So, I read the letters that came, and you had very, very good questions about the details, and I think John spent a lot of time answering a lot of those. And I understand the transparency issue and the questions about the details, but it's not clear to me if your civic associations are opposing the purchase. They're not.
We don't normally ask community members to respond to questions at the board table. Sorry.
Madam Chair, have a question?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said you was your final comment.
I think, I guess I'm done.
Okay. I wasn't gonna make a comment, but Dr. Murphy, you made a point of apologizing, and you talked about the process. What exactly, if we roll back the clock, would we be doing differently? What are we actually apologizing for?
Well, one of the things, I think, was how the community found out. When we are dealing with real property purchases, that is a confidential process.
Okay, but you said how the community found out. It was my understanding that the, from the emails that we received, that the community that reached out to us found out through the articles in the newspaper. Is there another, is there another way that community members find out about things going on?
Sure, Mr. Lander, I mean, I use maybe the most simplistic example that happened to me. Above where I live, they built four houses. One Saturday afternoon, a gentleman walked down the street, saw me working in the yard, and he said, hey, I just want to let you know, I'm gonna be building four houses right up the street from here. If you have any problems, just let us know, but I want to make sure you know who I am. Here's my business card. And it was a courtesy visit from him. I think that's probably where we could roll the clock back and have gone around, once we've gone through all the confidential nature of purchasing real property and made those connections. That was probably a misstep, and something we'll make a correction in the future.
Is that a practice that you, that the school system would employ moving forward? Because with the number of purchases and the number of people impacted, who do we, who do we notify, when do we notify them, how do we notify them?
Right.
Isn't something that we've discussed. I don't know, since I've been on the board and since you've been superintendent, that there was a formal process in place of notifying community members other than through the formal channels. This was something that was listed on the board agenda prior to the board meeting. And so, I'm asking, because you apologized and you brought this up, and I'm trying to find out, what is it that the board would do differently in a confidential negotiation about real property that would make the community aware that we're having confidential negotiations about real property?
Mr. Lander, are you asking the board or are you asking the superintendent?
I'm asking the superintendent, because I want to know if this is going to require board action, is what I'm trying to find out.
No, what I'm saying is, before the item would have been listed, okay?
Before the item would have been listed on the board agenda?
Board agenda, or the day the item would have been listed on the board agenda. As a courtesy, we could have contacted those civic associations to simply say, hey, we want to let you know, we don't want you to find this out on, you know, through other routes, we want to hear from us, this is gonna be happening, and we simply want to let you know this is gonna be happening.
Okay, and I'm asking these questions because you brought this up, and you apologized, and you talked about rolling the clock back. And I bring that up because the expectations in the comments, both in emails that we received and in the comments we heard this evening, had to do with transparency. And I think the perception that this wasn't transparent is a false narrative. This was transparent, this followed every other real-time, real property process that we always follow. And so, if we're gonna deviate from that and start informing community members and civic associations specifically about each negotiation that we enter into and sort of, when things are going to be listed on the board agenda, which is part of the public process...
Right.
Then I think that puts the board in a position where we wouldn't be able to keep up with the number of communications. We're, as board liaison for facilities and with Dr. Cannon, liaison to Joint Facilities Advisory Committee, there are a number of properties that we're talking about that we don't know if we can get access to. We have, unfortunately, a number of information items this evening that deal with specific property. And so, if you are stating publicly that you're going to make an effort to provide this courtesy to community members, I want to caution you that that is a precedent that has not been done before, and then that the expectation that these properties, each time we move forward, that community members will be called from the school system, letting them know what's going on. If that's indeed what your plan is, I think that's something probably the board should revisit, as far as how the policy and information is communicated. Because transparency doesn't mean that the community gets to help us decide on what we do, it means that they need to be informed. And I think in this case, as in every other process, there was an information provided to the community, the same way we do for every other property. So, I just want to sort of put a pause on that.
Thank you, yes. I know we've discussed this a bit internally, it sounds like we should continue circling around and having conversations. I know internally, the board, our staff, Mr. Chadwick are always interested in land opportunities, and we can't control the market when things become available. Negotiations are confidential, so there is a lot of stuff that happens that we can't share until a certain point when a deal is being made. But I think, you know, as Mr. Lander pointed out, we have a lot of information items, a lot of possible acquisitions we could be interested in, so we, it's a point well taken, we need to be realistic about how much proactive communicating we can do on these things. But I do think that we've been made aware that it is of concern to the community that when there is, doesn't appear to be any proactive effort. So, we'll continue to talk about this and try to figure out how we can do this better. We certainly want to, don't want community members feeling like they're not being heard or that we're not responsive to their interests. So, yes, I think if that is it for comment and discussion, yeah, let's have the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. We would now like another motion to move forward with this purchase. May I have a motion on funding?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Arlington School Board hereby authorize a transfer of $575,000 from the Capital Reserve to purchase the property at 1721 North Culpeper Street. These funds will cover the purchase price of $525,000 plus additional closing and site improvement costs, not expected to exceed $50,000. Any funds remaining after purchase, closing costs, and site improvement costs will be returned to the Capital Reserve.
Thank you, and is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and any comments or discussion? Hearing none, let's go for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Our last action item is a personnel matter, and I will make this motion. I move that in case FY17-02, the board recommend to the State Superintendent of Public Instruction that the Virginia Collegiate Professional License of a former employee be revoked. Is there a second?
Second.
Board members, do you have any comments?
Yes. I will not be supporting this motion because I think that we should be recommending suspension. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, let's go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. We are now ready for our information items. Our first three information items are policy revisions that will be presented together, I believe, and Dr. Murphy?
Yes, I'm gonna turn to Kristy Murphy, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and I believe Dr. Murphy's gonna move through several of these. So, at each point, Dr. Murphy, if you could just present the information, see if there's any discussion.
That's confusing, Dr. Murphy. Dr. Murphy?
Thank you, Dr. Cannon, and good evening. I have several policies I'm presenting tonight, of which one is not a human resource policy, it is a student services policy. And so, in some ways, we combine them together, policy 25-1.17, student safety, in addition to school board policy 35-employment. In both recommended changes, we're recommending to add two protective classes. The first to the student safety, to add as a protective class or pregnancy status, and then under employment, add pregnancy and veteran status. The next policy is a human resource policy, it's our contracts and work schedule policy. We needed to go back and update this policy, given that in September of 2015, we moved away from early release days on Wednesday. Our policy did not reflect that, which then tied us into saying that early release days would be on Wednesday. So, we're recommending to address that, as well as to remove the Wednesday as a designated early release day. The last policy recommendation is to change the name of the policy from telecommuting to telework, which accurately reflects the actual practice with industry standards rather than telecommuting.
Okay, and are there any speakers? Doesn't look like it. Board, questions and comments?
I have a quick question.
Let's start differently.
Just wanted to say, I would like to get a follow-up on the policy weekly meeting on the 29th, please.
Okay, definitely, we'll put it on the agenda. Ms. Toledo?
Is that a question? You mentioned the early release Wednesdays?
Yes.
I just, I just want to clarify, and I'm fighting a cold, so I will tell you I'm not 100% today, so I may just have misunderstood. Well, we have the opportunity with the change you mentioned to move early release days in the calendar, if we wanted to, to another date, or is that not, is that irrelevant to this policy change?
That is relevant. We now will have, should the school board adopt this policy, it will provide us more flexibility with what our early release day would be.
Wonderful, that's wonderful, great, thank you so much.
Anything else? Okay, we will see these items for action on September 7th. Thank you. That was the first three, you can knock those, cross those off your list, Mr. Lander. Our next information item is revision to school board policy 50-1.10, naming of facilities. Dr. Murphy, do you have comments?
Yes, we had prepared and were planning to bring this particular policy forward for the board as an information item this evening. Given some of the conversation at the beginning of the meeting, and I believe at this point, what I'd like to recommend to the board is to have us pull this policy from this evening's agenda, allow us to have additional conversation as we move forward, and then determine what next steps would be. So, my recommendation to the board this evening is that we go ahead and pull this, and we will come back here with, you know, a plan or a next step based on the conversations that we have.
That sounds terrific, thank you very much. And we don't have a speaker, is that correct, at this, okay. Thank you. So, yes, we will be having more conversations on that topic. Our next information item is a construction contract award for the relocation of administrative offices to Sequoia Plaza Two. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, I'm gonna identify items number five through nine. I believe Mr. Chambers is prepared to speak to a number of these items that also deal with administrative offices, the Abington Project, the new elementary school at Reed, as well as parking license agreements. So, Mr. Chambers, I'll let you begin, and if you could, when you conclude, see if there's any board discussion or questions, and then we'll move simply on to the next item.
Okay, very good. Good evening, Madam Chair and the rest of the board. First item is a construction contract award, full GMP, for the relocation of the administrative offices to Sequoia Plaza Two, as an information item. This is, we've been working with the Construction Manager at Risk, this is our first GMP that is being presented. So, the process that we've been working through, this is the first one that we're going to this point. Just a little bit of a project overview. On December 2nd, 2016, the board approved the lease agreement for Sequoia Plaza Two, which includes 79,892 square feet of improved space. On May 8th, the board approved the schematic design and funding for the project, and the project schedule is currently designed and pricing has been completed, which is how we got to the GMP. Construction is scheduled for September through April, with move-in of Phase One in December, and move-in of Phase Two will begin in March and complete in April. Construction Manager at Risk, a little bit of background, is a competitive, is a qualifications-based selection process, and its alternative to the design bid-build process, and it comes in two parts. First is the preconstruction services, which is the design and getting the pricing, and then the construction services. So, what we're talking about tonight is the construction services. Whiting Turner is the CMR that we are currently working with and is providing the preconstruction services, and getting the construction services by them is contingent on reaching the guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, and we have reached that. The proposed GMP that was reached is $9,231,028, with the work being provided by, that's the work being provided by Whiting Turner. The soft costs for the project are $3,868,972, and we have a contingency of $700,000 for a total project cost of $13,800, which does match the board's funding for the schematic design phase. The funding for the project, we have non-APS funds, as well as APS funds, realtor reimbursement from the lease, landlord tenant improvements that are allowed by the lease, and test-fit allowance, again, from the landlord. Then we have closeout funds of $5,665,811, MCM, third quarter review, revenue, I think, $195,932, and third quarter, $325,476. So, we have the funding for the $13,800. It is our recommendation to award part two... It is our recommendation to award Part II construction fave services in the contract amount of $9,231,028 to Whiting Turner Contracting Company, as well as to increase the existing purchase order to them to include the added contract value and approve the total project budget of $13,800,000. Are there any questions?
Questions? No? Please go on.
The budget, is that the budget we started with?
That is correct.
Okay. So I just, the word.
Essentially, with the CMR, we are trying to work to a budget.
Okay. Great. So the added contract value is just adding the value to complete budget?
Correct. It's to their, they were only contracted for the pre-construction. We're now adding the value of the construction.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that we're not increasing the budget in any way.
No, not at all.
Sometimes people see added value. And then I have a question that is probably more selfish question, really, but I noted on your slide that you said there's two move-in phases. And I was just curious if you knew when the school board may be moving. Is it Phase One or Phase Two?
Phase Two.
Considering Phase Two. Okay. So it's good to know when.
Phase One is essentially moving people out of a certain section, an existing section of the building to make improvements. They're going to be moving into new section, and then they move back into their space once it's renovated. So that's what the Phase One is.
I'm just trying to envision our school year and recognizing that we're going to be moving in the middle of that. So I appreciate that information. And thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Goldstein?
Sorry.
Okay. And, yes, just to clarify, we have, in fact, already allocated all of those funds. So, and there is no change in that. Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Okay. This is a contract amendment and change order for construction management services for the Abingdon Project. Essentially, on June 3rd of 2015, the board approved the contract for Hery International for Construction Management Advisor for the project. We are, oh, thank you. We are going to, looking at a change order being required for additional services required to the expanded project schedule complexity, not known at the time of the award. At the time of the award, we didn't really have the phasing established. We didn't realize the complexities and the noise issues that we would face with the contractor, et cetera. Just so you know, essentially since September of last year, work has been going on on that site from 7:00 in the morning, the normal start time, through about 11:00 at night, so that we were doing things when students were not in the building. So that's where this has come from. And because the board is required, approval is required for an increase in original contract by more than 25%, and individual change order greater than $100,000, we have to bring this to you. So essentially, we have the fixed fee with the previously approved change orders of We are bringing to you a proposed change order tonight of $131,655,000 for a total new fixed fee for Hery International of $1,305,188.67. It is our recommendation to approve the proposed contract amendment and change order funded by the project's contingency of $131,665 for the change order. And the change order is incorporated into the current funding available for the project, so no increase in funding is required.
Answered your question.
They have been extremely helpful to us through the process, and essentially have added a full-time person to the site and a lot of in-house resources that we didn't count on when we first signed the contract.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Board colleagues, questions? Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you. And is this going to impact the finished date, the delivery date of the new addition?
Initially, we were looking at a September fully completed date. We're looking at December. We changed that early on because of the phasing and the amount of students that are actually in the building by the time construction started, as well as some of the programs that were maintained in existing spaces. The phases were really shifted around a lot, and we knew there was going to be some delays. However, we are looking at the majority of the classroom spaces being occupied in September. Essentially, there's, the art and music will not be completed, and there may be a couple of other spaces that might be a little bit late by a week or two. And the field in the front of the building where the trailers currently are sitting, we are actually leaving the relocatables on-site until school opens to make sure if there is a glitch, there is a problem. Doesn't appear to be really at this point, other than weather. The rain, we keep having, the recurring rain is wrecking havoc with the site completion. But we're doing well. We believe everything will be completed. The county is working with us.
You said you expect it to be finished in December now? Is that what you said?
Yes.
And, but you want to leave the relocatables on-site until school starts?
This September.
In two weeks?
Correct.
Three weeks?
Correct. They were originally going to be removed, and we were going to start the site construction now. So it's just.
So they don't need to be left until the final December date?
Correct. Correct. All of the educational spaces should be all delivered by, with the exception of art and music, by the end of September at the latest.
Okay. And so then the plan is to eliminate the trailers?
Trailers will go away, and then the field will be reconstructed in the front of the building, the track and the playfield.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Next item, Mr. Chambers. Thank you.
And Leslie's going to join me. The following is a termination of the use of Construction Management at Risk delivery method for the new elementary at Reed. And before I start, I just wanted to fill in just a little bit. There was a change in the state code, which required our purchasing resolution to be revised. Essentially, we used to bring you the CMR and then request to use the CMR method at the same time. We now have to request the method prior to soliciting the CMR. So that's the purpose of this item that we brought to you this evening. And this is for preparing to begin the Reed project. Thank you.
Sorry, I was wondering why someone would bring this forward.
Yeah. Another change. Preparing for the Reed project, which was included in the 2017 through 26 CIP, scheduled to open in the fall of 2021, which is only four years. We have realized it takes us about five years to deliver a project, so we need to get rocking. But the expansion of the Reed School will create a new elementary with at least 725 seats, and we're looking at a cost, maximum cost of $49 million. Preliminary schedule at this point in time is design and permitting October 2017 through 2019, construction 19 through 21. Did you want to go through this one?
As Mr. Chambers indicated, the code has changed, so now we have to bring this to you upfront. We have to go through a couple of steps, and we have to check under the Virginia Public Procurement Act whether or not we've met a number of criteria. And these are the criteria that we have to meet. We have to have project costs of a certain amount, and the purchasing agent has to determine that competitive sealed bidding or an invitation to bid is not practicable or fiscally advantageous for the project. And we have done that.
Excellent.
Yep. We currently are using CMR procurement method on a number of construction projects. Wilson Middle School at the Stratford Site, Ellis West Fleet Elementary, renovation expansion of the Career Center, and the tenant improvements at SIFAX, which we just mentioned.
There are advantages to using Construction Manager at Risk. I think we're all aware of those, and that's why we've been using that. I'm not going to go into those given the hour. But we are going to get the guaranteed maximum price again, and then the more cooperative spirit that is engendered by having this CMR kind of own the design and construction.
And our recommendation is to approve the use of CMR procurement method for the elementary school at Reed, and to have you direct the staff to begin competitive negotiation in the selection process. Any questions?
Any questions? Hearing, Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah, just a clarification from Dr. Murphy. If you can, I don't want anybody watching this to think that we're starting construction activities and that we've skipped over the community engagement part. So, community engagement for the Reed School is going to start roughly.
Just to chat and help me out here with.
BLPC, PFRC timeline?
We will, yeah, we will be bringing the PFRC, I'm sorry, bringing the recommending membership for the BLPC to you for approval in October for information, I'm sorry, in September for information, action early in October. And then the whole BLPC and PFRC process will start immediately.
Okay.
So there's been, you know, this is right at the very beginning. We're doing it now, so we have time to get it in place. The community engagement has by no means, nor will it be skipped over.
Good, good. I just picked up on what Mr. Chambers said, that it takes, you know, five years for us to bring a school online, and so you have to start the construction planning and activities early. And just wanted anybody watching to know that we have not, you know, leapfrogged the community engagement process.
Absolutely.
Right. Thank you.
Much to be discussed. We have one final item, Mr. Chambers.
Mr. Chadwick.
Mr. Chadwick.
As you all well know, we're getting ready for 2019. And this item is the third parking license agreement for Fleet Elementary School during the construction period. So offsite parking for the Thomas Jefferson Middle School staff and construction workers is required because construction of the Fleet Elementary School is occurring, has already started on the existing parking lot. We spent quite some time searching for parking spaces, and we spent a lot of time looking for them as close as possible to be convenient to members of the school. We're not quite so concerned about the construction workers. However, we exhausted more closer locations for the remainder of the parking we need, and recently concluded negotiations with Highland Holdings, which is the, I guess, the ownership company for the ECDC, the Ethiopian Community Development Corporation, I think is what that stands for. And we will pay a rental rate of $85 for parking space per month. This cost is, as all of the others have been, it's planned and expected in the funding that we put together for the project, so there is no increase in the funding for the project necessary because of this lease. And I do want to apologize personally for bringing it to you for both information and action. We exhausted all possibilities, and it took us some time after we'd exhausted them to get to the point of signing a lease or being ready to recommend a lease to the school. And as you know, teachers will return next week. So thank you, and I do apologize for the rush.
Okay. Any?
And of course, the recommendation is that the chair execute the parking lease agreement, and it was, of course, reviewed and developed by APS Legal Counsel.
Well, yeah. Any speakers? No. I think we want to do a motion before comments, right? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted, okay, so is there a motion?
Yes. Yeah, I have a motion. I move that the board authorize the chair to execute the parking license agreement with the Ethiopian Community Development Council.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Colleagues, any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing, okay.
I know that this is going to be a surprise to some members of our community, and I want to just make sure, can you just comment that this is a good distance from the school? And that there are arrangements for the staff to be able to get from that parking facility to school? Could you just comment on that, please?
And we're working with Arlington Transportation Partners around communications with staff and other solutions, because it needs to be as convenient as we can make it for staff.
And over a number of hours, because not everybody comes and goes at the same time. So you'll be working that out.
Exactly. That's what we're very much concerned about.
Great.
We're also working with the principal, just so you know, who is apportioning the three different locations to staff or assigning them to them, and she's taking into account the different needs of the staff.
That's great. Thank you very much. Other comments?
You can hold it up to you.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, I'm a big fan of transparency, and I would really like, as we do in almost all of these action items, that we separate information from action by, you know, at least a board meeting. But I'm also, I've also used the expression quite a bit, that we have to tighten the belt with our upcoming capacity expansion plans, and that we need to manage expectations, and that includes my own. So while I would like to separate action, I'm sorry, info from action, in this case, that would really mean that the teachers, the staff at Jefferson would be without parking for three weeks, because our next meeting is in three weeks, when we would otherwise do the action items. So that's unacceptable. So we're going to have to, and I acknowledge these things happen sometimes, we have to do this tonight. We have to take action on it.
Ms. Toledo?
I just wanted to find out, are we now secured staffing for all of the schools?
Yes, we have sufficient parking spaces for all school staff.
So then I want to follow it up with, thank you so much for working so hard to ensuring that our staff has parking before they have to return to school. And while I respect process, I am so grateful that I can move on this motion and ensure that our teachers can go to school without having the stress about where they're going to park and how they're going to commute in. I know the stress that comes in negotiating a lease and finding that.
And we, as I said, we're working with the principal, and so we're working on advanced communication, so they know what to do the day they arrive, because they'll be completely different the first day, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. I really appreciate your efforts, and all of our ELT member on this. Thank you.
Everyone ready for a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Is there any new business? Hearing none, I first want to thank all of you folks for sticking with us. Thank you all for all the great work. If we didn't get a chance, Ms. Toledo was a good model there. If we didn't get a chance to say thank you for your presentations and your hard work and everything else you did tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.